Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the meeting of the Titusville City Council on August 25, 2020 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call the meeting to order. We have with us tonight Pastor Mike Casara of the First Christian Church of Titusville, and he will give us, lead us in invocation. Sir, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Right there.
Let's pray together. Oh, God in heaven, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we thank you. Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business, and we ask that you would guide our hearts and our minds in a spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon each participant so that we may reach a successful conclusion, and we thank you for being our source of guidance today. Strengthen our confidence in you who have made us to be, set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
City Clerk, please read the rules for speaking to council this evening.
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on classified judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of ten minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Attorney, please read the rules of the meeting this evening.
The city council meeting may be conducted by utilizing communications media technology as provided in Section 120.545B2 Florida statutes without having a quorum of council physically present in the council chambers. In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designating sitting shall be provided for within public, for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstrative aid shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed-circuit television and live-streamed YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agend@Titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the senator's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members and made a part of the public record prior to any action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
Thank you, City Clerk. That's City Attorney. Next item is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to do approve this evening. Who would like to do that? Member Jordan, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on August 11, 2020, and the special city council meeting on August 6, 2020.
I would second that.
Was that a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Jordan?
Yep.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Mr. City Attorney, next item?
City Manager. Yes, sir. We are now on Boards and Commissions, it's Agenda Item 6A. Due to personal reasons, alternate member Jeffrey Solomon resigned with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2020. His resignation was effective on August 7, 2020. Also, due to personal reasons, regular member Tammy Nelson resigned with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2021. Her resignation was effective on August 11, 2020, and staff is recommending that you accept the resignations of Mr. Solomon and Ms. Nelson.
Do we have any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resignation of alternate member Jeffrey Solomon and member Tammy Nelson.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second. I would add that we add with regret. They've been very faithful members of TEC, and I think they've provided a lot of input.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council? Hearing any roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Item 6B is the 2021 Student Advisory Council appointment, and it's confirmed Ms. Eddie Pringle as a member of the 2021 Student Advisory Council as the ninth-grade representative of the North Brevard Homeschool Association as nominated by her school.
Any cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we confirm Ms. Eddie Pringle as a member of the 2021 Student Advisory Council and ninth-grade representative of the North Brevard Homeschool Association.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Onto item 6C, Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, there is one vacancy for a regular member with a term to expire on January 31, 2021. Mr. Jan Carey currently serves as an alternate member with a term to expire on January 31, 2022, and has expressed his willingness and desire to serve as a regular member. If Mr. Carey is not appointed as a regular member, he'd like to continue to serve as an alternate member. Currently, there are two other applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Robert Johnston and Ms. Joyous Parish have both expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as regular members with a term to expire on January 31, 2021.
Are any of those people here this evening? Would you like to come up? Why don't you come up first, sir? Name and address for the record, please.
Jan Carey, 848 Macon Drive, Titusville, Florida. I've previously addressed the council, so why be redundant? I'm interested to serve full-time.
Other people may want to hear from you, sir, if you don't mind.
I'm the former elected sheriff of Donaiana County, second-largest county in New Mexico. I was active in planning and zoning and codes enforcement in that capacity. I have a master's degree in Christian counseling. My wife and I are certified marriage mentors. I'm a graduate of the FBI National Academy. I was chief of police in Fort Valley, Georgia, where we did codes enforcement, and I'm retired from law enforcement after 35 years and want to get back to the community.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to come up? Name and address for the record, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Joyous Parish. I am a resident of Titusville. I live at 1136 Riverside Drive. I am the applicant for this Planning and Zoning Commission position, and as I understand it, the position does expire in January of 2021, so we're looking at a four-month tenure. Based on my qualifications, I submit I am your best candidate for appointment. My parents were born in Titusville. I grew up in Titusville. I graduated from Titusville High School. I received a bachelor's degree from Furman University. I have a law degree from the Florida State University College of Law following my return to Brevard County. I was privileged to work with local law firms that represented a number of public entities. Among those entities were the City of Titusville, the City's Planning and Zoning Board, the City's Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Brevard County Commission, the Supervisor of Elections, the Tax Collector, the Clerk of the County and Circuit Courts, and the Brevard County School Board. When I applied to become a hearing officer for the state of Florida, I received a letter of recommendation from all of those individuals who supported my candidacy for that job. My professional work has always been commended. My former employers have attested to my integrity and my quality of my work, and I was able to accept the job as an administrative law judge and serve in that capacity for 31 years. Mother and I had always, always planned to retire in Titusville. She grew up two houses north of where I live. Growing up in Titusville was a great experience, and I often say I wish every child could have my childhood. My affection for Titusville and the friends that I have in this community served to inform my desire to serve in this capacity. My view of the Planning and Zoning Commission is that the group should act as a resource to you, the commission, the city council, and I might point out that my job as an administrative law judge was, excuse me, was very similar. I don't make laws. I did not make laws as a judge. I took the law as presented to me, weighed the facts as presented to me, and formed an answer. Among the decisions I rendered were complex environmental cases, hospital certificate of need cases, exceptional student education cases, teacher and professional disciplinary cases, child support cases, and I even issued public official opinions for the Commission of Ethics. My written opinions are available online, and you are certainly welcome to review the quality of my work there. I have no political agenda in seeking this appointment. If you seek someone with any particular political agenda, do not select me. I am by nature and by profession only interested in following the law made by others. To that end, I can personally assure each of you that I will perform the duties solely to support the council and to assist it to make informed, lawful decisions. I believe my education and experience render me your best candidate for the board. While others may argue they are qualified for appointment, I would suggest that I am your best applicant at this time. As council for the planning and zoning, I attended many, many meetings and rendered legal decisions. I assert that you have no applicant with that level of experience. Therefore, I very much appreciate your support, and I thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Member Nelson?
Joyce, how many years did you work with planning and zoning? Estimate.
About two.
Okay.
But then, when I left the city, then I went to work for the county, the law firm that rep-- in those days, private attorneys didn't represent the city and the county. A law firm did, and so I just changed law firms and then went to the, do the same work for, on the county level.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Want to ask anything? That's it, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Stanley Johnston, and I am a candidate for this position, and I have some, I have sent you a letter today that includes references that, in a letter that I sent to the city on February 20 of this year, and the references include our former city engineer, professional engineer, Richard Vatopka, some people you might know, Sean Williams, who was chairman of the PNZ Committee for many years, Billy Fitzgerald, I think some of you know, I think Mr. Jordan knows her, that she's a longtime honorable member, excuse, she's honorable resident and member of the, the hospital board, and Scott Ellis, Scott Ellis is county clerk, and he and I are both from Dunbar, West Virginia, which doesn't make a difference. But as a professional engineer, I have many qualifications in this, being also a licensed surveyor in preparing plans and signing and sealing documents. So I believe that I have some, some qualifications that are of interest. However, there is someone who has surprised me, which I believe that would be considered, or I would consider him above me. This is the fellow who spoke before me, this is Mr. Jan Curry. I've never met him, but I read his application, and it's, it's, being a former sheriff and police, chief of police, gives him incredible experience in difficult things. I believe, Mr. Lau can attest to that, I believe. It's a tough, it's a tough situation. So added to this, he's got seminary work, and he's, he and his wife are working together to help the community. So, and that's at a church that I attend, and I think even somebody else here attends, Indian River City, and I go there for the car care ministry, and been going to a prayer meeting there for over 15 years. So I'm, I would like to step down in this particular case to recommend that you bring on Jan Curry. I know that Joy Parish, she certainly has a lot of, of experience, but, but Mr. Curry has also, I believe, my reading is that he has been serving as a, as an alternate member. So I believe he's, he's already prepared, and he's already been approved, that he meets your, whatever you want to have for the PNZ meeting. So I believe that he would be a person that would be well worth it, and that he's already there. So, thank you. If you have any questions of me, I'm prepared to answer them.
I see no lights, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is, are there any other cards on this, please? Call the cards.
One additional card, which is Ruthie Cook.
My name is Ruth Cook, 1770 Wendover Oaks Circle.
May I bring that microphone down a little bit to you? That's it.
Yeah, I'm down here. Can you hear me now? 1770 Wendover Oaks Circle, Titusville. My name is Ruth Cook. My friends call me Ruthie. Please do so. I'm a friend of Joyous Parish. We've been, this is more of a personal testimony versus her resume, which I think she did a fantastic job. I like mine to look like that. But we've known each other and been friends since a long time. You know, we're over half a century. But if I want to, if I want to have someone's feedback, if I want to go to someone for advice that's going to see the big picture and all those details that I gotta have, I'm going to go to Joyous. If I want honest feedback, if I want to, you know, maybe tough words, maybe a tough situation, or may not, I can always count on Joyous to give me wise counsel, not as a lawyer, but as a citizen of Titusville. She loves Titusville, and her family does too. So, but, you know, her mother was very special to me and passed away on June 3 this year, and I have on her shirt. So I just wanted to tell you that, you know, if you want somebody who's honest and has integrity and a voice in the community and knows everybody, she's your girl.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other cards, clerk?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a card, ma'am?
Yeah.
She does have it. Laura Lee, you can, you can come up.
Hi, I'm Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Mims, and I've known Joyous as long as I've known Joe Lynn. I mean, we, we were, we've known each other since we were born. Our parents were friends, and I can, I can tell you that growing up, you did not push Joyous around, and I can tell you that now you did not push Joyous around. She's not going to be influenced by other people. She's had decades of experience in analyzing different situations and then making decisions based on the law. And so I don't think you could come up with a better applicant for our planning and zoning board because that's exactly what we need on this board right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure? Okay, well, we're very fortunate tonight to have two people that are very qualified, so I'll open the floor for a motion.
I, I beat you to it.
Oh, you're ready?
Yeah.
She says she's on there.
She is.
Am I? My light's on. Am I truly?
You're, you're.
Oh, okay.
I said you're.
Okay. I appreciate Mr. Carey's service. My, I am, I am a little bit concerned. I understand that he has missed three, the last three meetings of planning and zoning, which causes me a concern. But I don't think that we could ever find an applicant as qualified as Joyous Parish. And I will confess that I've known her for, for a while. We weren't close, but have known her for a while. I've known her as an attorney, and she's very level-headed, and she, she does apply the law to the facts. So for that reason, I would nominate Joyous Parish to planning and zoning.
Do I have a second?
Second with discussion.
Okay.
Discuss. I, I just want to make sure we're clear, because we did receive an email from the city manager as far as what Mr. Jay, right, his absences.
Yes, sir. We, we did not contact Mr. Carey as an alternate to attend those three meetings.
Right, and that's why I want to make clear. It wasn't like he was missing them because he wasn't interested or anything like that. That being said, I had a conversation with Ms. Joyce, a long conversation with her, and I found her to be very positive. I liked the idea that she is her own person, because I was very concerned about that with the relationships that she had, and she convinced me that she does like following the, as she said, the law, which I really like. I am kind of torn because of the fact that we do have Jay as an alternate, and we tend to try to make sure that the alternate gets their turn at bat. But he has a good attitude, and he said that if he is not picked as the permanent, then he still wants to be an alternate. Actually, in my mind, as an engineer, well, we'll kill two birds with one stone, because you pick her as the permanent, he's still the alternate, and then we don't have to come back later on to pick an alternate for him. So that's my rationale. I like both of them, but I, you know, my hat's off to Joyous, because she did have a conversation with me, and it was a pretty interesting conversation, and I felt very comfortable afterwards, after I talked to her. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other of the council wish to speak?
Yeah, just seeing if you're
Just seeing if your thing's working over there. Yeah, it's a tough call, we have some very qualified people out there, and Stan Johnson, I appreciated your words as well, to step up and say that, I appreciated that. I had Ms. Parish give me a call, and it was not a call to say, pick me, pick me, it was simply a call to say, I just wanna let you know that, that I'm gonna be up for the board, and that this is how I feel about things. I really liked the fact that she was very aware and stated it up there, that it's an advisory board to advise us, and, and I appreciated that, a little bit of evening humility when she said that. I, I do wanna kinda make sure we get it cleared up for Mr. Carey, that he wasn't missing any meetings that he was supposed to be at. That's kinda gotten out there a little bit, but it appears to me that the meetings he missed, he was an alternate, and he wasn't even aware he was supposed to be there.
That's our understanding, yes, sir.
I just think that, you know, we're gonna put this out there, and whoever's gonna watch this, I wanna make it clear, I know Mr. Carey from, from church, we don't hang out, and I see him, you know, but I will tell you that when the pastor's not there, he steps up, he's the lay leader, he speaks, he gives the sermon, and he pretty much runs the show, and I appreciate the heck out of that. Two very qualified people. And again, kinda like Member Jordan said, and I said last time, we have Mr. Carey sitting, sitting on the bench waiting to come into game, and we keep having people come along, and he keeps sitting on the bench. And again, Mr. Carey, if, if you have a strong feeling either way, let me know, or let us know, but I, I have to tend to agree again with Member Jordan, that we have two very qualified people. One I got to speak to, I don't know, a week or so ago, and I know Mr. Carey several years, but I feel like we, we have two great candidates, two great candidates, and it gets a little, my biggest frustration is we have a guy sitting on the bench who stood up last time and said, I'm gonna back up, 'cause this guy's so much more qualified. And I, I just think the world of that. So I, I can certainly support Ms. Parish as well. As you can tell, I'm sitting here right now saying, what direction do I wanna go with this thing? So we'll go forward, here we go.
Not yet. Mr. Carey, would you like to come up and just make a comment as to your attendance, and, and actually your feelings on whether you wanna go ahead and, you, the last time you were up for, for the seat, you decided to stay as an alternate?
And, and I kinda, I'm not saying I take offense to the allegation that I missed it, it should have been noted that I had COVID. Yeah. And.
That excuses everything, doesn't it?
And, and I also had to go to Pennsylvania, attend a funeral, my uncle. That being said, is, it, it just, that, that just got in my gut, that an allegation was, as a former politician, that that was just able to be thrown out there, without any, any opportunity to, to rebut. It's quite obvious that Ms. Parish is far more qualified than I am. I'll sit on the bench.
Thank you, sir, that's very magnanimous of you. Solves a problem.
But can I go ahead and just come in there as well?
Yes.
And, and Mr. Carey, and I hope you heard me, that I wanna make sure there's an opportunity, 'cause I kinda think that was thrown around a little loosely as well. And I'll just leave it at that. I mean, the fact that you had COVID, boom, but I also would understand that as an alternate, unless you're aware or asked to be there, I'm not sure that you would, you know, know that, but if, that's a whole other ballgame, and again, I appreciate you very much, I hope you know that.
I wanna let you know, has made very clear to us that you did, you would have attended had you been notified and so forth, except obviously with COVID, and so you couldn't those, but it wasn't that you were ignoring it, or were told to come and didn't come. So we'll certainly take that into account the next one that comes up. I deeply appreciate your stepping back as a, as an alternate, you do a fine job, and I'm sure you will do a fine job on, when you get to be a, a primary member, but at this point, we'll just go to a roll call vote, please. Ma'am, is there anything else you want us? Oh, oh, sorry, you're up there, I thought you, I thought that was her first name. You have anything you'd like to add to the?
I don't have too much to add, I just wanted to echo some of the comments that were already made. I just wanna say, I appreciate Mr. Carey so much, I had heard that as well, and had inquired more, and yeah, just wanna be perfectly clear, he did not miss anything, the alternate, the two alternate members actually rotate through, so we have the other alternate come in.
Anything else? Well, I don't think she's there.
I think Joya's just has a little bit more qualifications at this point in time, and I just wanna thank Mr. Carey for serving and continuing to serve as the alternate member.
I think we got the idea, thank you, Member Stokel.
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote, just signified by individual council people, please signify by telling which person you're voting for, that's all you need to do.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Oh, yeah, okay, Ms. Parish, and you want us to say who we're voting for?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, Ms. Parish.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
No. Which one? Mr. Carey or Ms. Parish?
I'm voting for Ms. Parish.
Thank you.
Member Jordan.
Ms. Parish.
Member Nelson.
Ms. Parish.
And Mayor Johnson.
Ms. Parish makes it unanimous, thank you.
Mayor, if, if I could, since you did receive a letter from your planning zoning chairman regarding the membership, the attendance of one of the members, and you've had that discussion, under section 253, city council may authorize a member to miss more than three meetings, so I'd either ask for a motion or consensus as to whether or not you're going to approve any of the absences relayed to you by the chairman for Mr. Carey.
Which you prefer, is there, what do you want us to?
A motion.
Make a motion?
I would move to excuse Mr. Carey's absences, I appreciate him taking the time to clarify that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay, congratulations, both of you actually, and again, many thanks, Mr. Carey. Next item, please.
On to item 6D, which is the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Recs. The terms of regular member Andrew Connors and William Klein expire on August 31st, 2020. Members Connor and Klein have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as city council appointees, and have requested reappointment for a two-year term to expire on August 31st, 2022.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
As the.
We have one applicant here.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Would you like to come up?
It's Mr. Connors.
Good evening, Andrew Connors, 3448 Willis Drive, Titusville, Florida.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor-elect, council members, how's it going today? Well, I can definitely attest to Mr. Klein's ability to serve on this commission. I've never met anybody that is more prepared about bird watching in my entire life, and knows the ins and outs of every little thing out there, in terms of this beach erosion, looking up grants in a spare time to help get more trees in our parks, like the dude's a machine. I put that on the record. I'm just here because I, I think it's fun, I mean, not as contentious as the, the last commission, but, I mean, I think we need parks more than ever, and a year ago, I stood up here and I said, you know, I'm raising my kid, he's now two and a half, we go to the parks all the time, and, you know, being able to be outside and enjoy our little ones is what it's all about. And to tell you, one of my favorite memories of this past year was the Halloween event we did last year, I was sitting next to Member Jordan, Member Nelson, Chief Lau, and me, and I thought, how many people do they have to call before they got to me? But I can tell you what, it was a blast, and the kids had fun.
Any questions, sir? Thank you, sir.
Can I only say that next time, we need to go over and play laser tag? Yep.
Can I make that motion?
Yes.
First thing, being the council liaison for that board, I would say that Mr. Connor and Mr. Klein are two outstanding members, always present, always participating, right now, we're doing, it's really not even a Zoom, we have a, a phone conference line where we can all come in and speak, and they're always prepared and always participating, and, you know, I'm really proud of our, our appointees to this commission, so I would make the motion that we reappoint Mr. Connor and Mr. Klein to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Member Nelson, head of.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is petitions and requests, would anybody like to speak on the petitions and requests?
My name is Stan Johnston, registered engineer, land surveyor, and I have a allegation that there's a reporter that says that I'm an incompetent engineer, and it was began February 12th, 2019, and this wild and crazy story is, is supported and promoted by our city manager, our city attorney, all council members, and it's not true. So I wrote you a letter dated August the 15th, which no one has responded to. So I'm wearing this tacky necklace, which is described in the letter, and it has a, describes a hundred dollar bill, this is not quite a hundred, but a hundred dollar bill. A hundred dollar bill is, is to be given to anyone who can provide me a copy of this $70,000 report. It's a, that, that was done by your imaginary professional engineering company, who began claiming that, and you began claiming and promoting this false, that their report exists. And also an empty envelope, an empty envelope, I've given you an empty envelope on July 14th and other times, and the envelope is still empty, I'm requesting someone to give me this report. As I told you before, is that there is no report, no record of it within the city of Titusville. So in my letter to you, I wrote that, that, that all of you, including our city attorney, is because of this, is you're, you're outrageous liars, fraudsters, cheats, I'm reading directly from this letter, that you haven't responded to, liars, fraudsters, cheats, bullies, shysters, fruitcakes, idiots, clowns, nuts, and cowards, because you're not telling the truth, you're afraid of the truth. Truth is, isn't this story is all fabricated, none of it's true, what you're saying. So on this and other matters, you're also liars, cheats, fruitcakes, bullies. I've asked for you to respond to this letter, you haven't done it, you haven't responded to any of my letters on this, you just have a code of silence and a closed-door policy, which doesn't get us anywhere. So furthermore, I wrote, says your arrogance, your arrogance on this matter and other matters demonstrates that you're idiots, clowns, nuts, fruitcakes, fools, fraudsters, et cetera, and a threat and a disservice to the public. So this is what I've written to you, and you still haven't responded. So I'm recommended that you and city seek truth and justice, and then follow up with repentance, reconciliation, and restitution, if net, if justified, I'm reading directly from this letter, regarding your fraud, city errors, and this is also slander, cover-ups, and shenanigans over the past 30 plus years.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay, I'm asking for two more minutes, please?
No.
And any questions that you have?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Just to put it in perspective, this has been going on for several years, the same speech is being given each time, repetitively. The city attorney sent the, the contract in question. Sir, if you shout, guess what happens? You're disturbing, you're disturbing the meeting, sir. I allowed you to speak, allowed me to speak. I didn't address you at all, sir, I haven't spoken to you, as you pointed out, in years. The city attorney sent him the copies of the contract in question, he refuses to believe that's the contract, that's his business, and this has been repeated and repeated and repeated. We used to try to answer his, his questions, we've given up on it, that's it. Okay, next item, please. Next person, any other petitions and requests? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Morris Mall, 115 Lakeview Avenue. I wanna piggyback on something from the last meeting, I think the city manager had spoke concerning about day labor and daily pay. They said they went to Merritt Island, I think the question was asked, that they went to Merritt Island and picked some guys, I guess, from the daily pay organization over there. That's kinda like a slap in the face in Titusville, because when you look at it, we should have a daily labor and daily pay here too as well. When you realize that you got people here that's coming out of systems, they don't, they're not able to find jobs, some of them have felonies, but you do have a place where we can have a daily pay, they can get out and work and lined up to get work, if they work hard enough, they can have employment. If you will look around, even from here behind Burger King, from Titusville, and even the one they built on the Leon, there was no workers from our community that worked on any of this, and we're wondering why the crime rate is this and that, or we had to find jobs. So my thing is, why go to Merritt Island to get guys from, for daily pay when we should have one here? We need to have one here so that the ones that are here are able to work, pay their probation, without being worried about being violated. And the other thing, if you notice, there's a lot of homelessness here. Sometimes we have to look at them, maybe you give them a job, they won't be up at the stores. I got people from 95 still standing up under the bridge with babies that we take care of. So they need work, and to, for him to say that they go to Merritt Island to get people for daily pay, we need one here in Titusville. We really do, and I don't see why we shouldn't. They had asked me to get 15 people for employers with the virus and all, a lot of people don't even know they're gonna have jobs, so it's hard to get 15 people to sign a petition to come back to find out what we're gonna do. I know what we're gonna do, and I will continue to look, I got like about six or seven already on the petition, but in the meantime, what about the one that's risking of being violated because they can't pay? A lot of people can't go to Merritt Island, a lot of people can't go ride the bus or get a bus pass. Would you consider about having, working with me, or have somebody that will work with me to get a daily pay here? When it was here before, a lot of people stayed off the streets, we talking about from Bladen Park, they set up on the, Bladen Park, give them a daily work, you won't be having that problem. And there's a lot of things that going on that maybe it would help. It just, it just don't make sense to me, why, why Titusville have to go to Merritt Island to get guys to come in Titusville to work, when we got people in, just in our community. Can I get another minute?
Yes, go ahead. Oh, well, I have to get a vote on it.
Motion for another minute.
Second.
Okay.
Have a motion.
Yes.
And a second, all those in favor say, say yes. Go.
It does not make sense to go to Merritt Island or anywhere else, go get somebody to do daily, day labor and get paid, when we can have the same thing here, we had it before, it got taken away. Last time that we did have it, a lot of people was working, a lot of people did dedicate themselves, and they got jobs. And all I'm asking is give, give these guys a chance out here, because there's people that's worrying about, and if you look at it, I got to pay my probation, I gotta pay restitution, there's no work, I can't find work, where you think they're gonna be? Running behind Chief, Chief Lau gonna be running behind them, because they're gonna do whatever they can to take care of their family, in order, we, you know, that community over there is a part of this community as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's start coming together and try to help the situation, other than just talking about what nobody wanna do. You can't say people don't wanna work, everybody on the streets is not there to sell drugs, but if you don't give them a chance, or give them an opportunity to help them find a job.
Thank you, sir. I have to tell you, I understand what you're saying, but I have no familiarity with, with the particular thing you're talking about, city manager or city attorney?
As, as part of the.
As part of the budget process, the budget workshop that we had, the Public Works Department was coming off of day labor because we were having, we're not being successful with our day labor contracts. So he has requested to hire some people for the city and solid work department.
Are we proceeding with that at this point? We're doing it. Thank you for coming.
Well.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So my question would be, Mr. Ruiz, can we reach out to these people on Merritt Island and see if they would come up and have a conversation with us? Talk to about what they?
The company that, it's a day laborer company.
Yeah.
It's a private company that provides day labor people in different categories, just not service workers. They provide office workers. It's kind of like Career Source.
Okay.
So that is one of the places that we look for labor, and we also advertise for open positions. And I'm not sure what a conversation with the city for the private, when trying to get out of it.
I guess what I'm thinking is, could they come up here and like, address council and sort of lay out, this is, this is what we need to set a place up, or this is what we're looking for when we look at where are we putting the place?
We can certainly have our economic development director reach out to them.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, they may tell us no, but we don't ask, so all right, no.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
And to follow up with that, go ahead. Thank you, I'm sorry. To follow up with that, can you clarify, and you just said it, and I'm trying to get it in here, where do we stand with that in our last budget workshop?
During our budget workshop process, Mr. Cook has requested that we're backing out of day labor contracts because it's unsuccessful. We've not been able to get day labor on a consistent basis with the workers that he needs.
Okay. And I've gotten to work with Pastor Mallett here in, I don't know, last year or so. We worked a lot, and the thing I really like about him standing here right now is he's, and I say this to him all the time, you know, we all know a lot of people that, you know, talk the talk, well, he's a guy that walks the walk. He, you know, he tries to take the right way to get to the right thing. And so all I'm trying to get him to do here is, not trying to get him to do, but I think what he's trying to do here is get the right step to get to the right place.
Yes, sir. And we are, once we get through the budget process and you approve that those positions will be approved, there'll be open positions for people to get jobs.
Okay. Would he do well? Maybe not yet. Maybe when we get done with the budget and we know where we're at. Would he do well to get with Mr. Cook or with somebody within the city?
It would be the HR department.
All right. We can talk once we get through the budget. All right, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak on the petitions and requests?
My name is William Gary. I reside at thirty-seven oh five Bell Arbor Circle, Titusville, Florida. I'm a member of the North Brevard branch in NAACP. I serve as first vice president. Good evening, Mayor Johnson, council members, staff, and those here in the audience. I'm here tonight to speak on the issue of police accountability and transparency. To protect and to serve, that oath is adhered to by ninety-nine percent of law enforcement officers we encounter every day, and we appreciate and respect their service. But there is another one percent that shows no respect for that oath. That is why I'm here specifically tonight to ask the city council to enact an ordinance that would create a citizens' police review board composed of citizens of this community appointed by members of the city council. We are all aware of questionable conduct on the part of law enforcement officers where no consequences resulted. This has happened too many times. And let me stop at this point and be clear. We are not anti-police, we are anti-police brutality. While this community enjoys a good relationship with our law enforcement authorities, we have concerns with what happens if that relationship turns sour, or if key figures who keep the relationship good are no longer around. The citizens of this community deserve a process to foster transparency, enhance community communication, and ensure trust and respect between the city's police department and the community. After all, law enforcement personnel are public servants, and citizens want to have a feeling of fairness and justice when there are questionable incidents involving our law enforcement department. I believe you all received a copy of a proposal to create the citizens' police review board. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them, and I'd like your input.
Anyone wish to speak?
Yeah. I do. Bill?
Yes, sir.
You know, I was an old prosecutor. I like to say I'm a young prosecutor, but spent many years there. And I remember when we started, I thought, you know, at some point, we're going to have a number of African-American officers, and I think that will make it better.
Could you speak up? I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. I sort of thought, you know, when I started out, we're talking like nineteen eighty? And I think I could count, on one hand, the number of African-American officers in the county. And I could count, didn't even take more than two or three fingers to count the attorneys that were black. And I thought, you know, at some point, we're going to have a number of African-American officers and a number of African-American attorneys, and things are going to get better. And I saw the job changing. And it became a job where it was twenty percent police work and eighty percent social work. And I'm not, you know, I thought, well, how do we, how do we make this work? And, you know, we're asking these officers to go from comforting a child who's been molested, to chasing somebody, to bandaging somebody, to settling landlord tenant. I mean, they're all over the place, trying to do this job. And I thought, this is, this is just my thought. At some point, we need to look at how we're training our officers and what they need. And I don't know the answer to that. I wish I did. I think we're very fortunate in having Chief Lau, because he reaches out and taps into resources in the community, mental health experts, to come in and train his officers on how to spot mental health issues, how to deal with those people, how to try to de-escalate this situation. But I don't think it's all the way across the country. I think we're, I almost feel like we're like in this little bubble. And you're right, I don't think he's allowed to retire. I think we, you know, sorry, you might just have to stay. He talked about, and this is really for Chief Lau, he talked about a program down in Melbourne. And before we add another layer of bureaucracy on top of it, I'd sort of be interested in having Chief Lau talk to us about what Melbourne's doing, and seeing if that addresses our issues. Because I think we are in a unique.
Well, I'm somewhat familiar with the program that's in Melbourne. It's a police community relations board, which they discuss things that have to do with policing in the community. But that still doesn't allow, and I think Chief Lau is a fine man, he does a fine job, but he can't keep his eye on every officer that is out there. And we all know, or we should know, now, some of us is in denial, I'll agree to that.
Yeah.
That some officers go to work with other than to protect and serve, on my mind. We haven't had a major issue like that in Titusville as of yet, that I know of. But that doesn't mean that we won't have one coming. And citizens want to feel that there's transparency, that someone else can look at the facts of the matter, and feel that they know exactly what happened there. And that's all that this does, sir.
But what you're talking about goes further. You're talking about subpoenas, you're talking about doing a second investigation, and I sort of see it conflicting with laws.
Well, there's, there's a lot of language in that proposal.
Yeah.
And the language is there to negotiate until we could get a final set of provisions that everybody agrees on there. It's taken from other cities that have similar boards there.
Okay.
So it's not, this is not set in concrete as such, but it's a framework to work from.
So the program in Melbourne, how often do they meet?
Which one now?
The program in Melbourne?
I'm not sure how often they meet there. I think they may have a regular monthly meeting. This one is basically meet on, when it's necessary, or if the city manager, you know, something comes up and he wants them to meet. So it's maybe two months or three months.
Personally, I would like to see you and Chief Lau go down to Melbourne and see how this works, and then we talk about it. I mean.
Okay. I'll take that in consideration there.
Yeah.
But remember, this is one of the things that we're not going to put away, let it go away.
No, 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 no.
Okay. Mr. Carey?
A little question.
No, I mean, I'm asking that.
You know attorneys, you do know attorneys can talk forever. You know attorneys can talk forever.
Yeah, I've got that idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Carey, you said yourself, we don't have that problem here. And I agree with you. You also said that it's one community, and I also agree with you with that. I think because we don't have a problem here, to take that step that you're talking about is just unnecessary and may cause a bigger problem than you think. I just, as you said, the chief and the job he's doing, and I kind of disagree with, they get a lot of training, and that's the reason why we don't have a problem. The only problem we have had, and it wasn't a problem, was about a year and a half ago when a group came up from Cocoa, and some of our local leadership was their ministers here. And they asked for this at that time, because they felt something had happened in an arrest that was wrong, and they had to get, and one person from Cocoa said, and we're going to straighten Titusville out. I took umbrage at that. I still do. When it was said and done, because there was a third officer who was recording the whole thing. We made it available to the community or anybody else who would like to look at it. As soon as they looked at it, the local leadership and ministers were among them, said the police didn't do anything wrong. They did exactly what they should. The fellow had a record a mile long, he was a violent offender, he was doing things that were provoking. His girlfriend was screaming in the background, she was seen moving drugs from her bra into her thing. So it wasn't, and the culmination was, everybody agreed, except the guys from Cocoa, who wanted to do this. They, they came in and said they, they still insisted upon it. And the council at the time basically just said, you know, this is Titusville, you're not from Titusville. This is a community that works together, and we wouldn't consider it. And frankly, I feel the same at this point. I can't, I can't do this because I don't think it's warranted. But in the meantime, let's have the police chief, would you like to speak, sir?
Sure. The frustrating thing from my vantage point is, as a member of the North Brevard chapter of the NAACP, I believe I know what the intent is for this committee. And I believe it would be counterproductive because it could actually, because of now we're falling under sunshine, and we have to follow by laws and rights of victims as well as the suspects. It could be counterproductive to the communication. And so what, what our administration is trying to create is an open dialogue. Just this past week, I met with several groups on parents that had a son of theirs, that they had some complaints. Under this form here, we would not, I would not be able to do that because this committee was in place. We're going to resolve this issue before it even becomes anything because of the open-door policy. And so what, what I would like to do is to continue working to have something that the entire group at the NAACP here in North Brevard feels comfortable with. You know, maybe it's a morphing of what the Melbourne one is, but the Melbourne committee does talk about discipline, they do talk about use of force, they talk about any issues. And because they've been in place for so long, they have such a good relationship that by the time the meeting comes around, they've already worked through all of their, their problems and issues, and the meetings are rather short. And so what, what we would like to see at the police department is the continued growing together. And we have made so many huge strides over the past few years. And I would like to respectfully correct you, but we've gotten rid of and fired and even arrested officers over the past ten years. It's, and it's something that, some of them had a complaint, and some of them were turned in by other police officers, because that good police officers do not want a bad police officer around. And so the past administrations have created a culture, and I'm hoping to continue that culture of bad cops don't survive. It just doesn't work. So, and that is through teamwork. What this is going to do is have legalities and obstacles, not creating where we can't speak to you because this is restricting us. And another, what Member Nelson said, another city committee comes with all the government rules that come with it. If we have a group of citizens that are on this, that are run by the citizens, and the police department is merely one member on that, on that group, then you guys run the meeting, and, and you can run it, and you can make your bylaws and go from there. It's more control for our citizens, and I believe it's going to create more of an environment of working together. And so that's what I would love to sit down and maybe have a subgroup of the North Brevard chapter to actually create this environment. Maybe we could be the model for other areas.
Mr. Carey? Could I respond to? Yes, sir, but I want to jump in before you do. I want to make sure you understand what, and you may, because I've served on some boards with you, I'm not sure that they were government auspices. Any, any board that is under any government auspice, such as ours right here, we can't talk to each other, except here. I know you may understand, sir, but some people out there may not, so this is also to educate them. We cannot talk about anything that may be voted on up on this dais in the future, or even in the things that happened in the past, if they might come up again. So that would restrict your group from talking to each other.
Well, let me address Chief Lau. This may morph into that, Chief Lau, that what you just was talking about there. But this is not necessarily to be run by the NAACP. We're just stepping up because our national office gives us guidance on this, and nobody else is doing that. I mean, there is other people, believe me, in the community that ask questions about things that happen there. You all don't always. You all don't always hear about those things there because they ask them of us and other people there. So it's not something that would be strictly the NAACP. As a matter of fact...
Sir, the NAACP doesn't have anything to do with it. It's the city. If you are under the city auspices, and that's what you're asking us right now, then you fall under that law. It doesn't have, I don't care who it is, what group it is, it could be the Catholic Church or whoever, they would fall under this law. They would not be able to speak to each other, and that would prohibit you from really communicating with each other. So I think it's a bad idea. The chief has explained the other one. I would invite you to get involved with that and see what you think before we take any other steps that might not be positive to our community. I've been here a long time, sir, 45 years in Titusville, and I see our community getting along as a community. Well, I loved when you said before, "We're one community." And I've made that point, you may have been in a meeting I was at where I made that point with a former clergyman that was here. I kept calling it two different, two different communities, and it's not, it's one community. And we are proud of that. I think all of us are very proud of that we have one community. So again, I would suggest you take a look at this first before we, because I'm not going to vote for it, I'm sorry, I can't. I think it, I think it would be the wrong thing to do at the wrong time.
So are you saying you would like for us to work with Chief Lau on coming up with some kind of compromise? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And Melbourne is working on one, not working on one, I guess they have it active, John, right, chief? Go down and see what it's all about.
Pardon me, I can...
Go down and see what it's all about with John, and you may be impressed by it, and it may serve the purposes you want. I don't think you personally want to stir up all kinds of problems and keep people from talking to each other. So all I'm asking is go and look at it.
Well, we're willing to do that, but I have to take deference with, I don't think it would be problems there without people, just because people can't talk to each other about an issue there. I really don't see that as a problem.
But you won't be able to freely communicate, though. Let's, I'm not going to argue over that, sir. All I'm asking is that you look at this, and if this serves a better, the purpose in a better way, that we don't have those problems, I think that's a good way to go.
We'll take a look at Chief Lau's suggestion, and if we don't think that that fits what we think ought to be, then we'll be back. Does anyone else have?
Sir, you're always welcome back.
Okay, yeah. Does anyone else have a question?
You got, my life's been on, I've been very patient.
You're next.
In here. All right. Actually, it's kind of interesting because you and I had a conversation this morning about this, and I read this because, you know, I certainly want, I think everybody knows how I feel about exactly what's going on in our environment today. But I'm really concerned about this because of the fact, number one, when you're talking about government being involved in anything, you're not going to be happy. Citizens aren't used to working under the sunshine, and I will guarantee you, when we get together, we're going to want to talk about an incident. And you are not going to be able to do that because when you vote on something, I mean, if any competent person say, "Didn't you just talk to John about this? Didn't you talk?" And you're going to have to say, "Yes, you did," and you just basically, you have no credibility after that. So you've got to be real careful about what you ask for because you might get it, and then you're going to be sorry that you got it. I think a better way of doing, and by the way, after I talked to you today, I was trying to come up with, what's the option? Because I know what you're trying to do, and your heart is in the right place. Our hearts is in the right place. We want the right thing to happen because we don't want to be silenced anymore. We want to feel like our life is, it matters to people, and we want to make sure that what we say and what we are feeling, someone hears us, especially in government. I understand all of that. So to me, I think the options that is being put on the table right now is a smart option. I talked to chief about what was going on in Melbourne and what they're doing, and I actually looked it up on the internet to find out exactly what they're doing, and I think they're, they encompass a lot more than what you're asking for, which I think is really positive because it's talking about a community relations council, which means that you get involved in a whole lot of things, including the police department. But it needs to be the citizens who is doing this and not the government who's doing it because when you get the government involved, I'm telling you, you're not going to like the structure, honest to goodness. And when you put this out, and I saw redlining thing, and I told you, the word subpoena certainly bothered me. Secondly, it's real easy for a board to get one cancerous member on it, and the character of what you want to portray has been taken away by a person who hasn't been data against the organization that you are saying, "I just want to make sure the citizens feel comfortable with what happened," right?
Okay.
But you've got one board member over here saying, "No, no, I do not like this. This guy is bad." And in fact, when you start looking at the information, looking at the video, you find, no, the perpetrator actually was the bad person in this thing, and the police officer actually did something. And by the way, as a, as a small business owner, when it comes down to employees, you really have to be careful. The police officers do not lose their rights when they become a police officer. And so you've got HR involved in this thing, and when there are problems, you know, you can't just be blurring out a person's name. This person could be suing us, the city, because now you're putting all their information out there, and they've been found not guilty, if you will, or they found that they followed the procedure. If they're following the procedures that has been trained, they've been trained for, you can sue all you want because their defense will always be, "I followed the procedure." If you've got a procedure in place and they don't follow it, then you've got a problem.
Well, that board, I'm sure, would be capable of doing that.
But that's another problem I have because now you're trying to have citizens who are not trained in...
No, 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 no.
Sir, we don't, we don't have discussions in that manner. We go one person at a time, otherwise it gets out of hand.
Right.
I know you want...
He has the floor right now, you'll be allowed to speak.
I know you want to defend this because I really believe you want to do the right thing here. I just don't, I'm just not comfortable with what you're asking for because I believe what you would get is not what you want. And so I really believe that the best thing to do, and matter of fact, my option was to have a possibility of what to do. And I was going to ask that city manager work with the chief of police and come back to us and tell us what would be a better way of us doing this so that you can be happy with the process that is going to be put before you. We're not going to ignore it. I think there needs to be a possibility, and you're the one that have defended and said, "Chief Lau is a wonderful person, we don't have a problem now, but what happens when he's gone?" Well, that tells me I've got some time because Chief Lau's not going to go anywhere that I know about. So we've got a little bit of time to do it right the first time so that all of us will be happy with the results. That's just where I am. Okay?
Sir, would you like to speak? Go ahead.
I think...
Well, you could be next, sir, if you want. You can wait until after him if you want. That's up to you.
No, let's, let's see this question.
All right. Okay. Somebody tell me. All right, do the point.
Yes, yes. Point. As long as I...
I got you.
...when he can talk.
All right.
I've known Mr. Carey a long time, so I absolutely know you're standing there because you want to do what's right. I know that. I've known Chief Lau a long time, so I know he wants to do what's right. When you started off, two of the things you said you wanted to have, this is important, is transparency and communication. And then when he speaks, one of the first things he says is he wants open dialogue. I think what we've got here are groups, our groups here that want to get together and make it work. You had said earlier, and I think it's been repeated several times, you know, Chief Lau does a great job, we don't have that problem yet. And, well, you know, I don't want to, I refrain. I was going to use another athletic analogy, but I'll step back. But I will say, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Now, we all saw it again, again, we saw it. Wisconsin this time, before that Minnesota. Oh, the words I would like to use right now, it drives me crazy, it makes me sick. But I can't fix their problem. I've got a guy right there that I expect to have it right here, and I have a city manager, and people have to be held accountable. And just like, and I will use a little because it's what I've done, if I'm the athletic director and I got this team that's not getting it right, I will fire your butt. I'm not talking to you guys. I will fire your butt. But that doesn't mean because he screwed it up, this team over here has to be disciplined because what might happen, because what we got going on right now, and I was just at the event Saturday about getting guns off the streets, I spoke there, tried to give a little preten, and I really did. Motorcycles everywhere, I was still trying to talk. But the point I'm making is, I think we work hard in Titusville, and I don't know, I may be here longer than anybody, not you maybe, but I've been here since 1965 when I grew up, and I say this all the time, I just said it Saturday to Jeff over there. I remember sitting over there watching football games on Sundays in the community with Max Shivers and Shanette Croker and Boot Lewis and Kenny Luke, and they were trying to teach me how to do cornrows. Well, these hands can't do cornrows. But the point I'm making is, I'm very, it's a very important place for me. And the communication and the openness that you speak of, well, if we stop having that, then we got a problem. And we stop loving each other, and we stop caring for each other, we got a problem. I don't think we're there. I'm getting sick of seeing other places have it. I can't fix them, but I'm, ooh, be careful what you say here. I'm darn sure, I'm darn sure we stay where we're at.
Well, we'll just, again, we've been fortunate in many cases. There's been some incidents that happened. I've been involved with, meeting with Chief Lau on some things that happened, whatever, but only knew that and one or two other people that was with me. This way, and I believe there are other smart, bright people in this community. I don't think that I'm the only one that can look at documents and ream the facts from those documents and make a good decision. I think there's other people. That's the point that I had, Mayor, is that I don't think that people can't function in this capacity in this community. I think we have those kinds of people here that can do this job and do it well.
And I will just follow up with that, and the two words that you said earlier that hit me that I feel like we have, and we have a police chief that has, and we have a city manager that has, is, and a council, quite honestly, we can only be so transparent because of the things I just spoke about, but transparency and communication, transparency and communication, like Member Jordan said, and I think the mayor said, you know, and Member Nelson as well. You get the government involved, and boy, the transparency and communication, you know, it's kind of like having the dance steps, we can do this, but you don't have the rhythm, you can't move because you're so tied up. I can't talk to you, I can't talk to you. Once we leave here, I rarely talk to them about anything, but when I do, I can't talk to them about a thing that means anything for the city. And that's exactly what I don't want to have you lose with the, with the police chief. I don't want the NAACP to lose it, I don't want the community to lose it, I don't want anybody to lose it, and when we start getting the government involved, the rules start to pile up. And then, what did you just talk about? You just violated sunshine, now I've got to turn you in. Not me, but I'm just saying, that's the kind of stuff that goes on. I just want to say again, you started off by saying it, chief said it, if we've got to get together and continue to talk, which I think you're already doing, continue to do so. If we want to go to Melbourne and see what that's doing, you know, again, I've got to look around and say, if he goes, I really can't go, and if he, that's how it is. But I'd like to go down there with you guys and see what it looks like. I want to, you know, I'd love to do that, but again, just how the rules go, if the mayor wants to go, I've got to back up because we really can't be at the same place at the same time working on something for the city. You don't want to get caught up in that. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, but if it ain't broke, let's make it better. And that's what I'm asking for, and I know that's who you are.
We would take that into consideration there. I think there's some others that would like to speak on this also, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time there. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Linda Golden, 1100 Country Club Boulevard in Titusville, Florida. And I've been here as probably older than Dan Deeser in this community, and probably Mr. Jordan, I'm older than him, maybe not as old as Walt Johnson, and maybe Jolynn.
What did she say?
But nevertheless...
You're not older than me, I don't know.
No, I'm not older than you. I can tell by the grace of the gray hair, I'm not old as you. But nevertheless, I am the president of the Concerned Citizen here of Titusville, and we have a group of probably about dying people, and we have gotten a lot of things done with the Martha Luther King March with, I appreciate you all approving that, the signage. But what I'm concerned about, I think, Chief Lau, we were at Gibson, you said something about a review board, and we talked about Melbourne at that time. It is time for us to stop dropping the ball at our community. Neither one of y'all live...
Can you back up just a little bit? Your voice is, it's too close to the microphone. Your mouth is too close, so that...
Okay, well, turn hearing aid down, it's in.
Me too.
Nevertheless, nevertheless, it's time to stop dropping the ball. Neither one of you all probably live in the hot, the target area of Titusville. Sometime we put things behind the scene because you don't come out and know that there is problems all over the world, you can see it. Might not be as great as Titusville, but there are problems. And I am concerned about my black community and whether you, when I looked at your face when Bill was trying to talk, you looked like you had been hypnotized. Now where is he going with this? I looked at you, and I didn't appreciate. The thing is, Walt, and all of your counseling, let us become one community. We are separated, we are divided in our community. You don't live in our community, so therefore you probably care less what's going on. It's a black thing. No, it's a community thing. I don't know of Chief Lau, I've heard good things about him, and I've heard bad things about him, but that's not for me to come up here to judge because I've not had an encounter with him about anything. If we're going to come in our community, let us farm, let us have a review board, let us go to Melbourne, have them to come up here. It's not about the NAACP, we're all community people. And I'm tired of when we come up here and ask you all for things, it's like we got to beg you all for, to help us in our community. There's no, it's timeout now for begging you all. I'm going to get with you, Bill and NAACP, whoever wants to get involved with, because enough is enough. So tonight, you go home and you pray about it, what you want in this community to make it better. Maybe we have a better relationship with the police department. Things are happening all over the world. Let us not be, have an area where things start to rise and burn down because people are sick and tired of things. So tonight, thank you and very much for what I'm saying tonight to you. Any questions?
I have no questions, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much.
I would, Lynn, I would just like to say that we do want to see a community, and as far as I'm concerned, there is only one community, and we need to act together, so...
Right, and if you need any reference, that's my classmate over there, Joyce Paris. And that's my classmate.
Now I know how old you are.
And I know she stands for the law, and if there's a problem, I can go to her with the law, and probably she's going to help me solve it.
Yeah.
Ma'am, I don't, no, it's not a question, I just want to say, I was about to say the same thing. We have one community, I want to keep it one community. I know a lot of people from your community, we work together, Jeff and I work together, Bill and I have worked together on different boards and things. I've been doing this for years, ma'am, both here and when I was in business, I was involved in the community to keep us all one community. So your purpose is my purpose.
I hope so. Okay.
Good evening.
Mayor Johnson?
Name and address for the record, sir, please.
A.J. Davis, address 525 Grant Street, Cocoa, Florida. Pastor St. James' Amen Church here in Great City.
I didn't recognize you with your mask on. I got it now.
I got you.
No, no, you don't have to have it on. I said when you walked up, I didn't recognize you because you had your mask on. You can take it off. You can take it off. You're not by anybody.
Um, ve- ve- very quickly, I've heard all the discussion. Um. I'm, I'm new, not new, but I was born and raised in Cocoa. Uh, and got pa- and got appointed here in Titusville. I'm glad to be in Titusville, Florida. What I, what I've seen at, over the news yesterday and it just saddens and sickens me. Um, but let me, let me say this for the record. Nobody is perfect. There are no perfect cities, no perfect council members, no perfect nothing. But we can do so much more together. Uh, I like what I heard about the Melbourne thing, so let's, let's look into that. Uh, worst thing you can do is to just jump into something, uh, and then on, on, once it's done, you can't un, you can't, can't undo it. So let's, let's work together as a community. Let's, let's go with, uh, Chief Lauer. Let me say this for, uh, I have a very good relationship with Chief Lauer. When I got to the city, he greeted me. And I try to, I try to mix well with all the police officers so they'll know who I am and where I stand. So I'm pleased with the work, uh, that he's doing here in the city of Titusville. As human beings, none of us are perfect. We can all make mistakes, make mistakes as parents, so forth and so on. But we can do a whole lot more by communicating and doing it together. For the, I, I do believe together we stand and divided we fall. So I'm looking forward to whatever we can do in terms of, uh, relations committee or whatever. So that we can, it's, it's best to be proactive than versus being reactive. So I want to thank you for the time you've given me here tonight and keep on doing the work that you do.
Thank you for coming in, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Anyone else want, wish to speak on the petitions and requests? I see none. We go on to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I don't think we gave direction to the, to staff to do something. And, uh, if you remember, I said we, I moved that we, uh, I have staff to, uh, provide advisability on our next steps, what we can do as far as a police, um, advisory committee or whatever. And have Chief Lauer work with the staff.
That's, that's funny if you want to make a motion. I don't have a problem, but I think that's what we've been saying. That they should all get together, the people that are involved, not everybody certainly, but go down to Melbourne and then come back to us and.
Right.
What they have. If you want to make a formal.
Yeah, I think it needs to be formal to make sure that we have it on the record that we want to do something about this. Okay? So I moved it.
I have a motion. I have a second. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Okay. Next item, please. I said passes unanimously, sir. That means I voted for it too, or it wouldn't be unanimous.
They didn't take final action. They just gave advisability to look into something and bring it back. If there's final action or creating that, we will take cards and have an agenda.
Uh, we don't, we don't need any discussion here. Sir, next, next item.
Yes, sir. We, we are on to consent agenda. Um, council, would any council members want to, um, pull any of the items A through D under consent?
I see none.
Uh, city clerk, are there any cards for items A through D?
Yes, we have, um, four cards for items A through D.
Okay. Uh, with your permission, Mayor and Council, I'd like to read for the record items, uh, A through D.
Yes, sir, please.
Consent agenda item 8A, approved resolution number 272020, amending resolution 142020 to correct the legal description and extend the date by which the conditions of the approval must be achieved. Consent agenda item 8B, authorize staff to apply for the 2020 federal EPA Brownfield Community Wide Assessment Grant. Consent agenda item 8C, approve advisability for staff to reassess the thresholds for site plan review to more appropriately match the level of review to the potential impacts of the development. Consent agenda item 8D, approve advisability for staff to review the process for master plan approval.
Thank you, sir. Um, clerk, who, the, the card for them or for the same person? What, what's that person's name?
We have, um, one person with four cards.
Person's name?
Um, Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnson, you come up. You've got 10 minutes total. Start the clock, please.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. Professional engineer and the person who's been accused of, uh, being entirely incompetent and as a professional engineer by some wild and crazy, uh, report. It was supposed to have been written in 2019 that doesn't exist. But anyhow, on this, uh, these particular four items, uh, I think it's of, uh, special interest is that what we're having now is a historical event here in Titusville, a historical event here in this council meeting. Uh, and the historical event was, uh, something that just happened that, uh, you should take note of. I'd like Bill Gary to see this. But anyhow, um, the historical event is that, uh, it was a continuation. It has to do with these four, these four items of, um, what you've witnessed is outrageous dishonesty by all these council members here and, uh, city manager and, uh, Walt Johnson. Uh, some of you may not know is that I've asked for, uh, the termination of our city manager, the resignation of our, uh, our mayor, resignation of, um, Mr. Jordan, and resignation of Ms. Nelson, who's not here right now. Um, and for calls, um, and these causes has to do with the dishonesty and it has to do with these four items, which I believe that, that this should not be, um, or these people should not be considering these items because of their dishonesty, which has been just demonstrated here as a historical event in which Mr. Johnson said that, uh, hey, uh, Mr. Broom has, uh, given me some, several copies of this, uh, report, which he hasn't done. And he doesn't respond back. So all of you are promoting and supporting this slander and fraud, dishonesty, all of you. So I'm, uh, I've looked into, uh, taking you to court.
Which item is this relevant to?
It's, it's to all of them. Like, for example, the, uh, 7D, no, not 7D, 8D, uh, is, has to do with advisability or view of master plan process. Uh, I'm going to, uh, uh, bring up issues in which the city is, uh, is ripping off our community and, uh, the destruction of the environment because the city has got problems that it's not addressing. And in that, in that particular case is that the city is not following the master plan and the city is also has flood zones that are inflated. They're higher than what they have been calculated to be. So, um, that's something that happened in 1985 and that has continued throughout now. So that's something that is a long time thing on that particular item. But I can go to the first item is the item 8A. Is, uh, has to do with the, uh, uh, correction of the rights of ways there to be vacated around that lot on Brown Avenue. And, um, I'm looking forward to that correction to be made. The next item, uh, 8B has to do with the, um, 909 Main Street and also the, the, uh, Shell Station on Garden Street as far as the pollution. And I think that in this case is that before going anywhere, we should, it's, it appears to me that we should be able to do some kind of a test that, that, that we have known some, some known pollution. That would certainly encourage a successful, um, uh, grant, uh, federal, this granting of a federal grant. So, um, uh, that's one thing I would like to mention on 8B. On, um, 8D, I, I mentioned the, about the ripoffs. And what we have in our community now is our city is, um, has ripped off and has destruction, unintentional destruction of our environment through. And that is by way of, of, uh, uh, putting flood zones down, elevation of flood zone down that are higher than what they're calculated to be. And that is, for example, in the case of, uh, Mr. Diesel's mother-in-law in Baker Subdivision. It was a foot higher, at least a foot higher, well, over a foot higher than what it was calculated to be in 1985. Yet our city disregarded this information, never sent it to FEMA for over 30 years. So in this case, it was a ripoff of our community, our homeowners, right, and so forth. That was a ripoff for Baker Subdivision. And it, and it's the same case with, with, uh, uh, another subdivision that the city will not, actually, there's several, there's several areas that there are no calculations. The city has no calculations. FEMA has no calculations on these flood zones. And that should never have happened. But it happens. That's what's happening. You don't have them. You don't have them. In fact, it's all the information of 1989 is gone. The city got rid of it somehow. And the city has not been able to, has not, excuse me, has not, has failed to get the information from FEMA. To restore that information that FEMA has, just doesn't have. So it looks like they deliberately destroyed the information. That's what it looks like the city has. In this case, we have destruction of environment. I'll give you, I'll give you an example on that. Is, um, um, well, we have two ripoffs. I'm, I'm gonna say Park Preserve is one of them. And, um, a Publix on State Road 50. Both of those were clear cutting, clear cutting. Why do they clear cut? Well, the clear cutting can occur. And in this case, for example, for the Publix case, is that they excavated a huge, like a pond for compensatory storage. And yet there is no calculations for that 100-year flood zone anywhere. I don't find it. I don't find the city has it anywhere. And yet, yet they went ahead and provided, they excavated, and it looks like it's well over two acres of, of land and put in a big area over there at Spring Valley. Now, Park Preserve, what happened there? Well, it was clear cutting. Clear cutting and, and excavation for compensatory storage in a flood zone, which as far as I can see, and which as far as, as, as I've, I've seen in that particular area, is above what it's supposed to be. And not only that is, the city has downstream of some of those areas is that the city doesn't clean the floodways. That is, uh, to the St. John's River. Doesn't have them maintained. But anyway, these are all, and I'm, I'm talking about, in this case, 8D. And I'm speaking to you as a professional engineer, and I'm gonna be happy if you would get a professional engineer to disagree with me or to even find that report that doesn't exist. Nobody in here can find that report because it even, even our city attorney can't find it. The report that, that, uh, you asked him to send to me was dated 2016. 2016. Why, your claim is that, that, that this engineering company reviewed my correspondence from 2012 to 2019, and the city does not have a time machine. Neither do your engineers. I've talked to GeoSentec. They don't have a contract. The city doesn't have a contract, nor do they have a report. But the lie continues. The destruction of my character, slander and so forth. My attorney says, here's what my attorney says, you just can't do it. You cannot sue these, these politicians because our laws protect our politicians so much it's just a waste of my time, waste of his time. So now, so, so right now, you're, as far as I can see, is you're protected by your slander and your dishonesty. And that's the way it goes. But, but, um, uh, I have this, um, for 8D. Uh, I have this example here, which, which this is, this is one, one of the exhibits I had on March the 12th. And as I was walking to the podium, I was approached from behind, unsurprised behind, by three police officers who removed me from the council chambers as directed by Mayor Johnson. I think that's interesting. And that's the way we have suppression of, that's an example of suppression of, of, uh, freedom of speech. That's what's going on in our city right now. So in other words, I had this. I had this in my arms. And I had another poster in my arms. And so I was removed from council chambers without words spoken to me, just grabbed and taken out of this. And you all witnessed it too. That's what's happening in the city of Titusville, a corrupt city, a government that stinks. My time is up. May I have another more minute?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You left out the part that I let you back in to speak as long as you'd stay to the subject. But that's not unusual. Okay, uh, did we make a?
No motion yet.
No, I didn't think so. Okay, we need a motion on vi- on consent items, uh, A through D?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
I guess that's all we need to do.
Yes, sir. Uh, we're on ordinance 9A. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Go right ahead.
This is ordinance number 62020, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending the requirements for a wetlands determination that is valid at the time of submittal to the city. Specifically amending chapter 29, special districts and overlays, section 2971 intent, and chapter 34 procedures, section 3455 master plan submittal, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and for incorporation into the code.
Staff has been advised and confirmed with state, uh, staff of St. John's River Management District that the current code language that's proposed in the ordinance and amendments regarding wetland surveys are not workable based upon the procedures and staffing levels of the Water Management District. Attached in your packet is information provided by local engineering consulting regarding the difficulties in obtaining a formal wetland determination currently required by this code. Therefore, staff is seeking advisability to amend the current code to require a, a current survey prepared by a knowledgeable environmental professional be provided to the city as required by statute. Permits from the, the available permitting agencies are required prior to beginning the development activities. This requirement is provided on all permits issued by the city and will be included in the code. So what we're asking is to withdraw this item and also item 12B, which is the associated item with that. And Ms. Busak is available to answer questions that you may have on these two.
Ms. Busak, any comments or any questions from staff? Okay. So where are we?
I can make the motion.
Yeah, I guess so.
We'll, we'll need to take cards.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we have cards.
We have cards.
One additional item that I failed to, to put in there.
Okay.
Is the planning and zoning considered this at their July 20, or July 8, 2020 meeting and, uh, recommend approval 5-1. And at the July 15, TEC, they unanimously approved this ordinance.
I don't know whether they asked for any, uh, so that's, that's in there also?
Yes, sir. And you all tabled this at your, uh, July 28, 2020 meeting.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards, clerk?
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm, I'm speaking on this subject as a professional engineer. And, uh, I've spoken out against this.
For a number of reasons, questioning what the heck is going to happen because it is a, a complex issue that, uh, I just don't see that you've, that, that has been thoroughly considered. And I believe that Peggy Busak has voiced that concern. Not particularly, not necessarily on some items that I have mentioned or that I have in mind. But, um, uh, this is complex. For example, in order to do a wetland survey, it's not cheap. And my understanding is that it can expire and it can change.
it can expire, and it can change. So, um, uh, in this case, is, in order to do a wetland survey, an actual determination, you're supposed to have permission by the owner. When I say that, you should think about, hey, listen, let's suppose I wanna buy a piece of property. Who's gonna pay for that wetland survey when I go for a rezoning, say, a contract that is, is subject to rezoning, or, or something like that, or buildability? Then, then, uh, maybe that, that's a good thing to do, is to go ahead and have it done. But, um, uh, it, it gets complicated. It might, may have to be done another time, but it has to have permission, and, and a number of things that has to be done. And there's, there's different ways of, of determining wetland boundaries, um, and, so it's, it's, it's something. So, so, I, I am, um, agreement with, with, with withdrawing of item nine A and the other item that has to do with this, and also, uh, I'm concerned is because wetlands can change. For example, in this particular situation where the city refuses to, um, have the floodways maintained, what's going to happen in the future? Two things happen. One thing is there's more vegetation, creates more backwater. Another thing can happen is, let's say, city gets these maintained, floodways maintained. Right now, is as far as I can see, is one of them is, is completely just, I don't see that water's moving at all. And we've got possibilities, which I think has already happened, is someone built a road over one of them. That's between I ninety-five and, and, uh, St. John's River. So, we've got problems.
Your time is up, sir.
I'd ask for another minute?
No.
Thank you.
And counsel, just as a reminder, staff is recommending withdrawal of nine A, as well as twelve B, and advisability to develop an ordinance that requires wetland surveys be prepared by a knowledgeable environmental professional.
Okay. Uh, counsel discussion first. Any, any discussion? Anybody have a discussion? You, you want a second? I'll close the public hearing. I will accept the motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor and counsel, I move that we, um, move to withdraw nine A, and should we do twelve B?
Yes, sir, you may.
Okay, uh, and twelve B, and request visability to develop an ordinance that requires a wetland survey be prepared by a knowledgeable environmental professional for the submittal to the city.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, we're on, uh, nine B. This is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance nine dash two twenty.
Ordinance number nine, twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, revoking the economic development ad valorem tax exemption to Rocket Crafters, Inc., and providing for an effective date.
In a letter dated January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, Rocket Crafters was notified that their annual report was required to be received by the city's Economic Development Office by February twenty-second, twenty twenty, in order to comply with the Beavard County Property Appraisals Office deadline of March first. Because the annual report was not received, and because the headquarters' business operation of Rocket Crafters Incorporated is no longer located in the city of Titusville, staff is recommending to city council the revocation of the tax abatement for Rocket Crafters Incorporated. Representatives of Rocket Craft, Rocket Crafters Incorporated were made aware of this recommendation by way of the letter dated eight twenty-six, twenty twenty, as well as a follow-up telephone conversation.
City staff, any comments? I don't think so. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards, clerk?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston.
Hold the card.
Stan Johnston, I'm an interested citizen in this particular issue. Um, I think that sometimes the city does not thorough in, in what it's doing, because I've found that no report of when, when did the, when did they relocate, or when did they know they were going to relocate? Because what about in two thousand and nineteen? Did they get, were they, were they here in two thousand and nineteen, and did they receive this, uh, special, um, ad valorem tax exemption in two thousand and nineteen, or part of two thousand and nineteen, or even two thousand and eighteen? So, I, I, I don't see that anyone's looked into this. There's no comment about it in any staff report, but, uh, that's money. And, uh, right now, is the city is not managing its money very well. I mean, with the sixty-five billion dollars of, not, not billion, but million dollars of, of unfunded O P E V liability and so forth. So, uh, I'm asking you to, in addition to approve this, is to look into this matter, is to see if we've just thrown our money away again and again? So, uh, thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I could, um, Rocket Crafters has never received any money from the city as far as abating any taxes. They have never met the criteria. And every year that's been reviewed by this council, and for several years, they were given an extension because they wanted to see what ultimately came of this, they finally did make the decision to relocate, so there have been no funds expended, no tax exemptions given.
Thank you very much. Uh, any council discussion? See, any, uh, close the public hearing? I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve ordinance number nine dash twenty twenty, a revocation of the ad valorem tax exemption for Rocket Crafters, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please, clerk.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Next item is ten A, under ordinance's first reading. This is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning, small-scale amendment one twenty twenty for twenty-three oh eight Hopkins Avenue. This will include ordinance number ten and ordinance number eleven. I'll read both ordinances at this time. Ordinance number ten, twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by changing the land use designation on approximately ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square feet of property located at two three oh eight South Hopkins Avenue, by replacing the low-density residential land use with the commercial low-intensity future land use designation.
Your time is up.
If only, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present single-family medium-density R one B zoning district with a neighborhood commercial N C zoning district on approximately ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square feet of property located at two three zero eight South Hopkins Avenue, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on September eighth, twenty twenty, at six-thirty. At their August nineteenth, twenty twenty, meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the commercial low-intensity land use designation, and recommended rezoning to office professional zoning district versus neighborhood commercial zoning district. No votes required. This is the first reading.
Right. Uh, city staff, any comments? Counsel, any questions? No?
No.
Code, do we have, uh, speakers on this card on this one?
Um, yes, sir. We have the applicant here, present.
Where? Oh. There she is.
Hi. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Elena Buckner of one zero zero five?
You can pull it down if you like.
North Carpenter Road, and I represent Mr. Salazar and his application for the rezone, which was originally to neighborhood commercial. Um, I myself have lived in Titusville all of my life, and I've worked for Mr. Salazar for the, about three years this October. Um, I really just wanted to borrow a moment of your time, just to say that if approved, Mr. Salazar hopes to use, or to rent or sell the building as an office. Um, and that additionally, after reviewing the city's recommendations, uh, we, we do favor the office professional over our originally applied for neighborhood commercial. Um, if you guys have any questions, I'm available. Otherwise, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your time.
Thank you. This is just the first reading, so there is no vote today, but you should come back for the next one, which is.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so there's no vote on this. Next item?
Cards?
No more cards.
Oh. Yeah, she said she only had one. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. And counsel, we're on eleven A, which is Brooks Landing Subdivision Sketch Platte. Brooks Landing is a proposed one hundred and forty-three lot subdivision on approximately seventy-one point nine-nine acres, located north of J J Road and west of Hammock Road. Pursuant to section thirty-four one fifty-two required submittals and exhibits in Developmental Review Procedures Manual, section one-one point one, the following information has been provided as part of this sketch platte to the city. At the regular, uh, planning zoning meeting on July twenty-second, twenty twenty, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the following conditions. Require clarification of the stormwater plan to determine the amount of drainage into the Indian River Lagoon with the requirements to lessen or prevent drainage into the Indian River Lagoon, or a clarification that there is no impact to the Indian River Lagoon with the current stormwater management proposal. Number two, require more open space, a minimum, a minimum of twenty feet of clear pathway around each pond, surrounding the ponds for recreation, including items such as walking trail with native vegetation planted with both trees and shrubbery. Um, the code requires ten percent natural planting preserved area could be located within the minimum twenty feet clear pathway around each pond, and the same could be counted towards the, the native planting. And three, require the developer to provide proof that the required protection of protected animal species to the furthest extent possible abiding by state regulations. The motion passed for two. Uh, Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that you have, um, concerning this approval of the sketch platte for Brook Landing subdivision.
I was just going to say that your package, beginning on page one sixty-six and one sixty-seven, lists the requirements for the sketch platte and the submittal that's required on them, that the staff has reviewed the sketch platte and finds that it is consistent with the requirements shown in Development Review Procedures Manual, section eleven point one, which is shown, and we have also reviewed it against the master plan that was approved by council previously, and have found that it's consistent with the master plan as well. You have lots of paper in this particular agenda item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Counsel? Wait, I see Member Jordan is first.
Oh, I'm first?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right, where do we begin? It seems like we just was discussing this thing, and here we are again, for sure. Uh, I'm gonna start with the easy one, the twenty-foot, uh, oh, just messed up. The twenty-foot clear pathway, where's the requirement for that?
The, I, the code does not require a twenty-foot clear pathway around each pond.
What, what's, what does the code require?
Around the ponds?
Yeah.
The, the code requires that those ponds are stabilized, so, and a certain amount of, um, steep, um, grade on it. It requires that there's vegetation to stabilize that, but there is no specific requirement about a distance or clear area around the pond.
And so, the twenty-foot clear pathway was just a suggestion from planning and zoning?
Yes.
But no, no criteria? Where did they get the criteria for twenty?
I'm not aware of any criteria.
Okay. And then, uh, I'm confused by number three, uh, as far as protected species, 'cause there is already a requirement for them to check for gopher tortoises and all, all of that, correct? And there's some study after you?
Yes, we're, what, what we're required to do is, we put into our, every permit that we issue, that the applicant must have all of the required permits from all of the other agencies. Now, when the question was asked about additional information, the applicant did provide some additional information, and I believe there's a rep, at least one representative of the applicant here. The additional information that was required about, that was requested about the listed species is shown on page one ninety-one of your agenda package, and it is from John Shepherd, president ecologist of Atlantic Environmental.
So, they supplied more information, but it really wasn't required?
No, not at this phase, not this step. That's correct.
Okay, and then, um, the clarification of stormwater plan?
Sir?
The, the clarification for the stormwater plan? Can you explain?
The applicant requ, provided information, and that's shown on page one eighty-nine and page one ninety of your, um, application. It, the question was, is the water, is the water quality of discharge monitored? And the answer was, it is not proposed the quality of water be monitored. Monitoring of stormwater discharges has, and it says topically, but I think it means typically, never been required of development projects by the St. John's River Water Management District. The city engineer also has stated that what happens is that the actual stormwater system is inspected to make sure that it is functioning as it is designed, but that's true of all developments. The second question was how many gallons of water will be discharged to the Indian River Lagoon?
Right.
Uh, the, and the response from the development engineer was the project stormwater management system will be designed to attenuate stormwater runoff such that the post-development rate is reduced to the pre-development rate. It is worth noting that the city of Titusville has a stringent requirement that the post-development volume of runoff for the one-hundred-year storm event not exceed the volume for the pre-development for the initial twenty-four hours of the storm event. This provision of the code will be adhered to in the Brooks Landing design. There were two other questions that the council had asked about water quality standards for the discharge and L I D options to be utilized on site. The first, the response from the engineer is the project will be required to have a stormwater treatment system. The stormwater treatment system proposed for the project is wet detention coupled with stormwater harvesting. The stormwater harvesting is an L I D, um, option. This system design will demonstrate the annual post-development discharge of nutrients does not exceed the annual pre-development nutrient loading. The design will need to be reviewed and approved by the water management district prior to issuance. And then, when asked what L I D option would be utilized, the response was the developer did not anticipate L I D as a requirement for this site plan. However, the developer intends to utilize stormwater harvesting.
All right, so, actually, it's kinda taking the cart before the horse, since we don't have a L I D ordinance, right? So...
Right, but, um, they have, I did show them a copy of all of the options that were provided during the presentation, and that's the one that they reviewed, or that's the one that they talked about.
Okay, but tonight, we're gonna be talking about L I D?
Yes.
Right, and rather, what kind of option we're gonna?
Right.
Okay. All right, that's all the question I have so far, unless, I didn't know if, if the applicants wanted to say anything before we start, continually.
Well, we could ask anybody else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Member Nelson?
Ms. Busaka, um, chapter three relates to the development standards for, um, tree removal.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And, and it's indicating that trees located in a portion of the lot or parcel in which building, driveway, sidewalk, retention area, or accessory structure will be constructed where redesigned to avoid tree removal is not feasible. But when I looked at a map, and I can't remember which one it was, the developer had marked some of the trees as being trees that were going to be retained, but it seems like the... But it seems like the... What this is saying is, unless it's just absolutely not feasible, that those trees need to remain there. And so my question is, has staff gone over with him regarding any kind of modifications to retain more trees?
The applicant did correspond with one of the city's two arborists. And I believe I provided in your package, and I can tell you the page number. It is page 190 of your package. And the response from AG Ventures LLC is that they have worked diligently with the city's arborist and has provided the attached rendering and list of trees for preservation. And that is shown beginning at page 192 through 196, I think it is, of your agenda package. The developer did complete a tree survey for the entire 71-acre parcel, which is not a code requirement for sites over five acres. In addition to providing exact detail on the proposed trees to be preserved and the trees to be impacted, the developer has worked with staff to potentially save additional trees as outlined on the tree overlay site plan. And I believe if you go to page 192, you will see several trees... Hopefully, you'll have a color map of this. Several trees which are shown as green, and I believe that those are the ones that they have identified on their survey, beginning on page 194, as potentially able to save them. The lot... They are listed as number six, 20-inch oak rear of lot might be able to save. Number 11, 20-inch oak rear of lot might be able to save. A 24-inch oak, number 18, rear of lot might be able to save. They have highlighted 14, 21, and 23 as 20-inch, 22, and 36-inch trees at the rear of the lot. Number 32, a 20-inch oak at the edge of the pond in front of Lot 128, and a 40-inch oak, number 40. But typically, what would happen at the process... The next step in the process is that they would be required... Every developer is required to provide a tree survey. And then, very similar to what you see on page 194, there has to be a rationale by why the tree would be removed. And that would be required as part of the preliminary plat review.
Okay, and each lot has to have a tree in front, correct?
On the... In front of the property, yes, ma'am. It's not required that it be maintained. It's only required that it be there after the house is constructed. That's part of the CO.
I guess, because I'm looking at some of these trees, and I'm like, number 44, why are we removing that? Number, I think it's number six, is on the lot line, and I'm like, so why? What's the justification? It's not where the pad is.
I would suggest the applicant may want to respond to that.
Okay.
Name and address, you will be staying there for a while.
For the record, Steve Moller, professional engineer in Florida, Vice President, Masteler Moller, representing Mr. Genoni. Sometimes on a site like this, as you know, we have a lot of ordinances to meet. And drainage, which has been discussed, is very critical on this site. We do have to meet St. John's treatment and attenuation rules. And as was mentioned by Peggy, you all have a very strict code with respect to volume control for the 100-year storm. A project site like this, in order to meet those rules, there's quite a bit of grading that will be required. And many times, where the grade is proposed, it's not the same as what... Where the tree is. So we have to try to figure out where we can keep the grade the same if there's a tree. And if there is, then we can save it. It's very difficult to do. So I don't know if that particular tree you mentioned is that case, but if it's... Where the grade is changing, sometimes we can't help but to move it.
And I guess I understand that, but I'm saying you're going... We're talking about saving seven trees, 10 trees. And my math may not be right, I didn't add and subtract. But a relative... Relatively small number of trees compared to the property. And I'm looking at areas where, you know, the trees are on the back lot line. And I'm assuming you're not going to be doing any stormwater back there on somebody's property line.
Not typically, no.
And I'm like, so I guess I'm looking for a good faith effort for you guys to preserve these or seriously come up with reasons why they cannot be done.
Good.
That's sort of the way I look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from... All right, actually, I'm about to open the public hearing, and according to our rules, you are the first to speak, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, Peggy did a very good job presenting our project.
Just for purposes, because this gets written out later on, name and address for...
Yes, okay. For the record again, I'm Steve Moller from Masteler Moller, Vice President of the firm. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Florida. We do not have a formal presentation tonight. Peggy explained the project very well, so we are here requesting the sketch plat approval as one of the steps along the way to being able to construct this project. So if there's... Already been some questions, but if there's more, I'd be glad to answer them. Chad Genoni is here with me as well.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
All right, quick question, the three caveats that the Planning and Zoning is requesting. What's your position on?
The one that was the first one, not the first one you spoke of, the first one on the list, about drainage. We are required to provide a stormwater treatment system designed for the project that both treats the water and also attenuates the water in conformance with St. John's River Water Management District rules, in conformance with City of Titusville rules. And in this case, because we're on JJ Road, which is a county road, the county is also looking at it. So there's three levels of review that we'll go through in the stormwater design for the project.
Okay. And the 20-foot pathway?
The 20-foot pathway, Chad probably can answer better. But I will say that at the rear of every lot that is on a lake, we are required to have a 15-foot flat, relatively flat area that's sloped not more than eight to one. That is required, so that will be there. And if the lake is near a road, that's not typically necessary, because you can get access to the road or to the lake from the road directly. So in effect, there is a green area outside of the lot, between the lot and the lake typically.
Okay. And, okay, you already... We already talked about the...
The trees.
No, the endangered species. She explained that, so we are good with that, but you are, so.
And that's not my expertise, anyway.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
One more. Real quick. Everybody gets a turn. It's okay, you will. Your name is down here. But I want to ask Member Stokoe, because we haven't given her a chance in either case. Member Stokoe?
I'll take my question.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I just have one. I feel like a majority of the emails I've received and the biggest concern was... I should say, one of the biggest concerns was the amount of discharge into the Indian River Lagoon. And I appreciated the response that we got back that Peggy provided for us. I just wanted to clarify. Where it says, how many gallons of water will be discharged into the Indian River Lagoon? The response included, it is worth noting, the city of Titusville has a stringent requirement regarding this to make sure that it will not exceed the volume for the pre-development for the initial 24 hours of the event. I was wondering if Peggy may be able to kind of clarify that, if that's correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but it is a provision in your code that I would say is very unique. I've not seen it in any other code at a county or city. It is very stringent, and it will be met with our design when we submit it to the city.
Okay, so just to clarify, I suppose, but... And again, I'm getting... It's hard to kind of measure exactly how much, I feel like, because there are natural events that we can't really say for, like, an exact amount. But I just want to get clarification regarding the amount of discharge into the Indian River Lagoon that you guys will be meeting the requirement to not be having excess in there. Obviously, yeah, you can't really plan for 100-year storm event, and things might happen. But with this development, you guys are meeting the criteria to ensure that appropriate stormwater will be... You guys are meeting those requirements, I guess, in essence.
Yes, and as I said, that will be reviewed by the three entities, St. John's, the Brevard County, and Titusville. I don't think Brevard County or St. John's will look at that 100-year criteria. That is your criteria, so your staff will look at that to make sure we've adhered to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think that's... Oh, I'm sorry, you got...
I did have one other question. We had, I think, probably we all received this email from the Scrags regarding the setback. Do we have an answer for them?
Both the master plan and the sketch plat are consistent with the requirements that the council approved when this was originally approved. And that is... And it's a little tricky, so you have to bear with me. But the language is, there's a 20-foot perimeter landscape buffer. There's a minimum 70-foot buffer, which includes the 20-foot required perimeter landscape buffer, the 20-foot rear setback to the property line along the north and east property boundaries. And if you look, and I know this is going to be hard to see, but if you look at the area around lot... I don't even know the number, but if you see these large lots to the east, there's a setback line, and then it shows you a 73-point... I believe that's 3.7 feet between the adjacent... Between the back of the project and the nearest house.
So is 73...
Is consistent with the master plan that the council approved when this was approved in 19... I mean, in 2018, maybe? So it is consistent with the, what, 2019? It is consistent with that approval. As I read Ms. Scragg's letter, she was talking about a promise that was made in 2005 for a wall.
Okay.
And I believe that... Well, I know for a fact that the annexation didn't occur into the city until 2006. I searched today to try and find the... Anything from that architect, Brad Smith. He's a landscape architect, to show that the city had ever received that information. I couldn't find anything. So I cannot guarantee this, but I believe that whatever agreement or promise was made was when this project was in the county.
Okay.
And I don't... Now, Ms. Scragg still feels very strongly that this is a rural area and that she should be protected from these smaller lots. We had a discussion about this at the meeting in 2019 when this was approved. And Ms. Scragg's home is approximately 200 feet from the property line of the project. And then there would be about 73 feet from the project to the nearest back of the home.
Okay. But we've already approved this master plan?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Okay.
But Ms. Scragg wanted to take one more shot at it.
Understood.
Mayor, since we're talking about this email, can I confirm with the applicant that... Have you received a copy of it?
Not that I know of.
From Mrs.? This... We're referencing an email from Randall Scragg. At this time, I'll just read it so you can hear. And we should have a copy with the clerk. My name is Jenny Scragg, 2160 JJ Road, Titusville, Florida. Due to COVID-19, I'm unable to attend the August 25 city council meeting. I live on the eastern border of Brooks Landing. There will be eight homes built along my property line. I was promised an 80-foot buffer by AG Ventures developer. Now, I am only getting a 20-foot buffer. I would like to have AG Ventures build a privacy wall built along the eastern border to help keep the noise down and still have some privacy. JJ Road is now a rural area, and Brooks Landing Development is an intrusion in this area because it is not similar densities as the surrounding properties, smaller lots. You may remember seeing me talk about this issue in previous meetings. Thank you for your time.
I got a question here.
Go ahead.
All right, just to clarify, because I was looking at the map as you were reading it. I'm trying to understand, Peggy, the green line, what is that?
I'm sorry, which map are we looking at?
Page 193, I think.
Okay. I have a lot of paper up here.
All right, somewhere. Yeah, 193.
Page 193. Is that the... Is that the map?
Color map.
The color map that shows the landscape, the trees?
Yeah, because you're right, it's, I mean, it's like 200 feet away. But I'm just trying to understand, you got a blue line, a green line, and a yellow line. And I'm assuming the yellow line is the property line of the new development. Can that make sense?
I might be able to find that in this stuff I've got. Mr... If that's the colored map, Mr. Genoni provided that. So he might be able to find this fast... Oh, wait, I think I may have done it. Okay.
There you go.
I see the... The green line is the property boundary. That there's... You can see the lots are depicted on here.
Right.
If you're asking, the yellow lines down that show the smaller lots, those are actually the neighboring lots. But there is a green line that goes up and then kind of makes an eastward curve... Goes up and makes an eastward, what, 90 degrees? That's the outline of the actual project, Brooks Landing project.
But, no, I'm actually looking at, and she referenced 97 through 103. So you've got those lots there, 97 through 103. Or 193. All right, so you got a... I'm assuming the green box, that's the property. And then you got the yellow, which I'm a little confused about what that is. And then you got another green line after that.
I...
You don't see that?
I see lots of lines. Okay, do you... Okay, do you want to do something different?
I mean, probably, I was gonna say, that other white one's gonna be a little easier to...
Okay, the... Mr. Genoni's talking about the map on page 192.
192?
Yeah, that's just black and white. It might be a little easier to see.
Okay.
But again, we're talking about the trees, but if we go to the master plan...
Yeah, that shows that 70-foot buffer.
Right, it does. It shows the 70-foot buffer. And that is page... Let me see here. On your... That is page 172. And it shows you that 70-foot buffer.
Okay. Okay.
It's-
So, a simple question then. What is separating her property from the new development? Is there going to be some type of wall, or is it vegetation?
No, the only requirement that the code has is that there's a 20-foot landscape buffer.
Okay, so there's going to be some type of shrubbery, something there?
Yes, that's required by the code.
Okay.
Now, in this instance, the 70 feet is made up of that 20-foot landscape buffer.
Okay.
An additional 43, 40 feet, and then an additional 20 feet, which is on the lot in the project, but is the setback from the building.
So the 20 feet is from the back of the house to-
To the lot line.
To the lot line.
Yes, sir.
And then you've got the shrubbery.
Then you've got, then you've got 40 feet, then you've got 20 feet of shrubbery.
Oh, man.
So you've got 73 feet from the back of the setback line to the edge of the project.
Okay.
And then Ms. Scragg is approximately halfway in the middle of her lot, and if you look at these lots, you see smaller lots on, up on the, to the south, and then you see a large lot, which on page 192 says existing residential zoning. Her home is approximately in the middle of that lot.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're respecting what she was asking for, but to me, it seems like it's pretty reasonable with the, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Now's my turn.
Your turn.
All right, everybody ask everything, I'm done. It kind of, that's true, and it works out fine. I don't care who asked it, because one of the concerns I had was the buffer, because we all received emails, and that had a, you know, actually, I thought that was, remember, Stokoe was going to go, she used to poke about emails, and then it turned out to be more about the Indian River Lagoon, but the emails that I got, an awful lot of them, I know we all got the same ones, was the buffer. But, so it sounds like it's legit, the 70-foot buffer, it's just, because the lady spoke about, oh, it's only really 20.
It's, there's 20-foot buffer, then there's 40 feet, and I don't know what's going to be in that 40 feet, and then there's a 20-foot setback. So if you, that's a 20, that's a 70-foot distance, I, which is, I don't know-
Between her and what? 70 feet between her and what?
No, 70 feet between the back of the nearest house to Ms. Scragg's property line.
All right, that's the answer, because-
And then Ms. Scragg's property, house is set back some distance from the property line.
Okay. Now, I'll jump over to the second part, and that is the Indian River Lagoon. I was the one who originally asked the question about how much water is going into the Indian River Lagoon, and then, as I look at this, it's really the first one, how many gallons of water will go into Indian River Lagoon? And of course, it does depend. I get that it depends, and that ultimately, this is equivalent to approximately 13 million gallons per year. Well, I don't know that that really says much to any of us, that's a lot, but I'm not sure, you know, how much that really is as far as filling pools and this and that. How much water is that? You can't answer that, that's fine. So the real question is, what kind of water is going into the Indian River Lagoon? That's probably more important than how much. Is, you know, is it contaminated? Is it toxic? Is it, you know, what, that's the question that would be the biggest concern in 10 years from now, would be the biggest impact, not how much water, what's in the water? And that's probably a better question that, I don't know if I may ask an answer for that, and I don't know that you know.
I think the engineer.
I will try to answer that. What we do as engineers, we provide treatment systems, excuse me, stormwater treatment systems, and the methodologies that we use are basically derived and developed by the St. John's River Water Management District. Many of them have been enhanced over the years. I've been doing this a long time. I'm 64 years old, I might be older than a couple of you guys, but back in the day, we only used to use wet detention, and they found that wet detention, through testing and so forth, much of which was done by Dr. Marty Wannalista of the University of Central Florida, that when the Indian River Lagoon, it was recognized that there were some overloading, that they needed to do more. So there was a lot of science, a lot of research, a lot of data collection, which is not done by us, it's done by those types of folks, scientists and biologists. I'm telling you, it's kind of a big picture stuff, that's a real short version. So in doing that, they came up with requirements that we had to enhance our treatment processes to deal with nutrients. In most of the basins that we work with along the Indian River, it's always phosphorus or nitrogen or both. So in this case, I think it could be both here. The, so, one of the methods that you're allowed to use is wet detention with stormwater harvesting. So what we do with stormwater harvesting is rather than letting, for little smaller storms, letting that water leave the site, we use the irrigation system after the storm stops, obviously, the next day, it, in theory, that has been developed by St. John's with Dr. Marty Wannalista, that water would be pulled out and sprayed on the land so it doesn't go to the river, and that helps to prevent the, that water from going to the river. So is it an exact science? No, it can't be, because unlike wastewater, which we do wastewater, wastewater's pretty consistent going to the plant. You know what you're going to get, domestic wastewater, usually you can treat it, and the amount that comes each and every day is fairly stable. Rain is not. Rain is, you can get a two-inch today and not get any for two months, and then all of a sudden, you get four inches. That type of a storm, when you haven't had rain for 30 days, even if it's one or two inches, can carry a lot of stuff, because you've had all this accumulation of things dropping and falling, and that's just sitting on the ground, and then here comes a storm and wipes it all away. The next day, you could have a six-inch storm, and it doesn't take anything, because the other one already took it away. So it's, those are just my opinions, but that's kind of how it works, and you can see how that would be very difficult to come up with very precise things. Some years, the average is 53, 54 inches a year. Some years, we could have 70. Some years, we could have 42. So it's a very, everything that we do stormwater-wise is very empirical, from just past events, and using those past events as a guide as to what will happen in the future. If we, people smarter than me have developed models as to how to predict those things. So that's hopefully an explanation to your question.
And even when I ask it, I kind of realize we might not know exactly. I get that.
Right.
But obviously, with all the work that we've done on the Indian River Lagoon, and it's very, very important to us all, and when I say how much, that's what I asked two weeks, so how much is going in there, and then I see 13 million gallons, well, then it's like, what exactly is going in there, and what's the effect three years, five years, 10 years down the road? And that's my concern, and I get that-
Yeah.
-there's, you know, not a finite answer.
Right.
But that would be my concern. But that's where we're at. Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I could, I just wanted to read one more sentence, or maybe two. This was from KBO Fuso, who was here. Based on the state classification of the final receiving water body and other factors, the pre versus post requirement that is applicable may either be an 80% reduction in the pollutant loadings in the post versus pre-development. So if it's 100 pre-development, then it's an 80% reduction, or the post-development pollutant loading is less than or equal to the pre-development loading. I believe what that means is that there should be, under best circumstances, everything works right, as no more pollutants being put out during, than there is right now. And that site having been agricultural, there may be significant contamination on that site, I don't know. So that may be a difference when they do their soils testing. That's typically not something that we see at the sketch plat stage, that full engineering hasn't been done on this project yet, but our engineer has stated, as did Mr. Moller, that the city's restrictions are, the city's requirements are much more restrictive than other communities and in the water management district.
Who measures that? Who tests that? And I don't want to get any deeper than that, we can go all day, but we're talking 13 millions of gallons of water going in a year. We don't know exactly what's going in there, but, and you're mentioning a certain level is acceptable, not acceptable, can't go higher, can't, who measures that? Who knows what's going in there?
They do, again, Mr. Moller can speak better than I can, but they have lots and lots of-
Okay, that's my last one.
-technical information.
The Florida Department of Environmental Protection has gone around the state, and the entire state, and they do it in, they pick an area, and they have like a six-year program, I think it's six. The first year, they collect data, next year, they determine what the data means, they find out if the water body can assimilate the pollutants that are, I shouldn't, well, assimilate what's coming into it, because if you put a little bit of phosphorus in, it's probably okay. If you put too much, it's not good. So there's a certain amount that a water body can tolerate. Well, at the end of the day, when they find that there is an excess and it's causing problems, they then say, well, something has to be done, and that's called the Basin Management Action Plan. It's called BMAP. And they've held meetings all around the state, probably here in your community too, where they come in and they tell the community, you've got these situations here, and you need to, they kind of throw it in your lap. They say, you know, we're letting you know you have a problem, tell us what kind of projects you'd like to do to fix that. Now, they have some funding sources, I guess, but some of that's dried up. But that's the program, and they've done that all over the state. So communities are supposed to, and this is a lot geared toward the older areas of all of our communities, we all have them, where they were done 50s, 60s, 70s, where there was nothing done, and they try to go in and they say, we can take this area, and if we can get that piece of land over here and intercept that water before it gets to the river, then we can do something positive to help the river. So that's what the state at the DEP level is trying to do. Now, St. John's, with respect to new development, they just make us, they, we have to provide the treatment system so there is no degradation, according to their methods. So, and Peggy mentioned, I'm not sure about the 80% one, if, I don't think that one's better than the one we're doing. We do no net, no net gain, I think it's called. Whatever the load is at the beginning, we make sure that the calculations that they, the methodologies that they ask us to use, that the volume of pollutants that are predicted in the pre, that we don't have any more than that in the post. We always do that. That's, I've never done it the other way. I think what they're saying, if you have a tough site, they may let you go to only getting like the 80%, and they'll say, okay, you've done enough, but we always have been able to do to make it equal, and that's what we have for this project.
Okay.
That's what we have planned.
Thank you.
All right. And if I may, Vice Mayor, all the projects that we do, baffle boxes and all the floating pond, that's all, we all get BMAP credit for that. That's why we're doing those.
Okay, we just lost a little light. That's good. Member Stokoe, have you spoken, or do you want to speak?
Yeah, no, I'm okay right now. I already asked my question.
So he is for now. Okay. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, and I'm not sure if you have anything else you want to say. You can do it at this point? No? Okay.
Mayor, can we get you a little closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Do we have cards on this card?
Yes, sir, we have three. The first one, Stan Johnston.
I just want to confirm, is the applicant finished with their-
Well, I just asked him if he wanted to speak, and he said- If you would like to come up, as I said, you can come up now, because you get to go first. If you don't, it's up to you. They don't want to come up. Okay, Stan, you're next.
Stan Johnston, registered engineer, City of Titusville, resident for many years, having been reviewed numerous projects by Master Moller, as I was employed by Brevard County in the engineering issues. So I mentioned to you about government, specifically the City of Titusville, ripping off the public and destroying the environment, and that's through the development projects. So I gave some examples of ripping the public off and destroying the environment. Those examples I gave you tonight were Baker Subdivision, and it will probably, it'll be shown in the future, likely, Parkland Estates, homes along War Eagle Boulevard, and homes in Bay Meadows Subdivision, which is outside of the county, outside of the city. So indeed, the City of Titusville is involved in, and the question is, how about Brooks Landing? So I went ahead and put a speaking card in here to speak regarding this, whether this development is also, whether it's ripping off the public and destroying the environment. My review says, does not apply. So in other words, when I was speaking specifically of those three projects, excuse me, Baker Subdivision, Publix with compensatory storage on 50, and also, what's the other project? Oh, Park Preserve, clear-cutting. So it does not apply to Brook, Brooks Landing, but please expect it, that I'll be up here when I see that it does apply. So what you might want to do, and I've asked you to do it repeatedly, beginning in 2012, is the city to hire a good engineer. So you got one right here. Mr. Moller, professional engineer, you can hire him to say, hey, you know, Stan Johnston wrote this wrong, or something like that. And right now, you're saying that GeoSentek has the engineers, they've never contacted me, never talked to me. They don't, they say they don't have this report, they don't have a contract, and I have an envelope, an empty envelope, that says that you guys are shysters, liars, fraudsters, slavers. So anyhow, you've got an opportunity, prove Stan Johnston's wrong, you can hire that guy right there, professional engineer, to say Stan Johnston did this wrong or did that wrong. So I'm looking forward to hiring somebody like that. I've talked to some other people, I've asked Mr. Moller, who's a good engineering firm. So there you got an opportunity tonight, and there's a serendipity there that you come across somebody, and maybe you can show that Stan Johnston is just completely incompetent, or maybe prove that you guys are nothing but shysters and liars, crooks. Thank you.
Next card, please.
Kay Sainton.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Kay Sainton, and I live at 2360 Maryland Avenue, and the first thing I want to say is I appreciate council hearing my comment. The DEP Basin Management Action Plan for the North Indian River Lagoon states, although future development may meet state stormwater standards, the development may still contribute to loading to the lagoon. To ensure that future growth does not add to the degradation of the North IRL, local governments must be proactive in controlling loads from future growth. The applicant indicated that the stormwater treatment system proposed for the project is wet detention. The DEP has indicated stormwater detention ponds are largely ineffective at removing dissolved nitrogen and phosphorus from stormwater. Instead of removing 80% of nitrogen, less than 50% of nitrogen is removed in stormwater ponds. The applicant was asked if the water quality of discharge would be monitored. The response was that the St. John's does not require this. This is a prime example of a development meeting state standards, but still not being able to indicate that the discharge will not further degrade the Indian River Lagoon without monitoring data. Without monitoring data, how will the city be able to ensure that this development does not add to the degradation of the North Indian River Lagoon? Yet you are being told by the DEP that local governments must be proactive in controlling the loads from future growth. The DEP states that the way to address future loading is with LID strategies. The DEP states, integrating stormwater management treatment trains requires early planning and should never be considered as an add-on to conventional designs. They should not be considered an add-on. When asked by Councilwoman Stokoe what LID options might be utilized, the applicant indicated they did not anticipate LID as a requirement, but intended to utilize stormwater harvesting. The city's encouragement of LID has brought forth an add-on to the conventional design of ineffective stormwater detention ponds. Sites must be developed initially as LID to be effective. I would like to see more encouragement to utilize LID.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, I actually spoke quite, quite slowly so that I could get your attention. Could I have another minute or two?
Yes.
Thank you.
How, two minutes, too?
Do you need to call? No?
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Two minutes?
Thank you, yes.
No, you're saying thank you. I need to know that so that I can.
Oh, yes, two minutes would be grand, thank you.
Is that acceptable? Okay.
Okay. I appreciate that, um, Councilwoman Stokoe asked for LID options that they were being considered, and I would like to see more encouragement of LID. However, it's important to remember that a treatment train of strategies is needed to be effective, not just one LID requirement will make this effectively an, an LID design, okay? Another concern that I have is that the ditches along JJ Road are clogged and full to the top with standing water. Bill Klein sent you some pictures about that. Development maps indicate drainage easements from the stormwater ponds will direct runoff towards this drainage ditch that's already full. And citizens have already said the flooding is occurring, and now we're having two new developments occurring there that will add to the runoff and add to the ditches. To compound the problem, the railroad track separates this area from the lagoon. Is there a culvert that goes under the railroad track to allow the water from the drainage ditch on JJ Road to flow east towards the lagoon? Have any culverts been assessed to determine if they are adequate for additional runoff? The applicant indicates forty-seven hardwood trees, twenty inches or greater will be removed. The applicant indicates that five might potentially be saved, including two grand trees, a thirty-six inch hickory and a forty inch oak. Might counsel encourage the applicant to save these two grand trees? In my view, multiple concerns about this development have not yet been answered sufficiently to ensure protection of the lagoon and the grand trees. Thank you very much for the extended time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any questions?
Click, next card.
The next card is Terry LaPlante.
One question, Kay. You were talking about that the stormwater ponds are fifty percent effective in removing nitrogen.
That's what the DEP says.
That's the DEP?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
I can give you the website if you'd like it.
Okay, thank you.
Next card, please.
The last card is Terry LaPlante.
Name and address for the record, please.
Terry LaPlante from Melbourne, Florida. I want to urge you to take action and pass the Low Impact Development Ordinance, if not tonight, just as quickly as possible, and to offer Mr. Genovese a handsome package of incentives that would, uh, give him the motivation and the financial compensation that he needs to make this not only Titusville's first low-impact development community, but Brevard County's first low-impact development community. It is critical for our lagoon that we stop the green grass sod communities. We know what's going to be in the stormwater. We know it's going to have fertilizers and pesticides, and that somehow or another, probably that water's going to end up in the lagoon unless more of the best management practices that are used for the low-impact development is adopted here. Just as the tourist development council offers tax breaks and other incentives to bring businesses here, to bring jobs here, we need to do the same thing to bring the low-impact communities here. These low-impact communities are in enormous demands. I've been trying to find one to buy a house in for at least ten years here in Brevard. They don't exist. We have a right to live in a green community. We have a right to live in a community.
Can you just step a little bit back from your voice is getting louder?
I don't even need a microphone.
You don't have to be, that, that's true, but you don't have to, you don't have to be that far back.
So I would hope that you would put a nice package together that would make it feasible for him to save the trees that would soak up hundreds, if not thousands, if not millions of gallons of water when we have a stormwater event, that we could develop this community without the turf grass. And I hope that you will, uh, give some serious consideration to becoming a leader and making it happen right here and right now with Mr. Genovese. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please, click. The applicant, again, according to our protocols, can now rebut if you desire to do so. Okay? They don't?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Peggy, um, there was conversation about the ditches around the facility. Is that county or is that city?
They're county.
Yeah, and, and we did follow up after Mr. Klein sent those. The county is actually working on JJ Road, and there, there's a portion that they haven't gotten to yet, and that's the portion that was voted.
Okay, so they plan to improve that and that should support the new development? Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to close, close the public hearing with a council discussion on this matter. And I see no light, no name.
I'll start.
There you go.
I'll start. Um, I have not been crazy about this subdivision from the start, I'm being, be honest with you. And one of the things that bothers me is it is a rural area, and we're sort of intruding in it now. We're, we're past that point, so I, I can accept that. When I look at the aerial photo of the property, and then I look at the amount of trees that you're talking about saving, I just sort of shake my head, because I think these people are right, and that the more people we save, or the more trees that we save, the more people we save. More trees that we save, the better off our environment is, the better off, um, we are in terms of stormwater. And, so, I, I, like I said, I'm not crazy about it. I, I'll live with it, because we've always said we can live with it, but the, um, the ordinance says, hey, you have to have a reason to remove a tree. And my thought is, if that tree's over twenty inches, I want to see a serious reason. And if it's something where that lot line can be moved two feet, so be it. And especially the, the grand trees. I mean, make it, make it part of your development, you know? I was talking to Ms. Busaka the other day, and I said, we have a street in town, Dix, the old Dixie Highway, and I said, I love driving down there, because you have the big oak trees that form a canopy. And I just got back from Seattle, and everywhere I look is all trees. And, um, people are paying a fortune to buy a house out there, tiny, tiny little houses. The prices just sort of astound me, but, um, so that's, that's my thought, is that I can live with it, but the, my condition is those trees are staying as much as you can. So, that's my thought.
I don't see anybody else up there.
Let me, let me follow that up real quick, Mayor Cannon. Yes? Yes. I know you weren't pointing at me that time. I was waiting for you to point at me. No. I just want to reiterate what Member Nelson said, and I think I said it clearly when I was concerned about, you know, it's not even how much water's going into the Indian River Lagoon, it's what's in the water. And, um, I, you know, I had a concern when we first went through this, and, and part of that was, I wasn't feeling like perhaps we were, um, the developer, in this case, it's not me, um, communicated enough with the people who live there. I don't know if you've talked to them since then or not, I'm not even going to get into that. But I am going to say that I, we can say, save this tree, save this tree, and then we're not there, and you're going to do what you need to do. I get that. But I really feel like there should be some untouchables out there, you know, grand trees and, you know, trees fifty years old, et cetera, and, I don't know, I'm not trying to become a tree hugger, but I just hate to see trees like that go down without due thought and, and due reason. I would feel, I would just feel better if I knew that you felt the same way about the trees as some of us here do. But I get the whole thing, I'm, I get how it works. And, um, again, like, uh, Member Nelson, um, you know, we've, we've, we're pretty much there. And, uh, I just hope that the, the right things will be done. We can't go back and, and, and fix something that's done wrong on the Indian River Lagoon once it's in there. We can't put trees back up, and replacing trees with, that are fifty years old, crepe myrtles, doesn't work. And so, uh, that's my say, and in the end, it's up to you.
Wait, we, we, yes, I guess you can, we'll let you do that. Can you do that?
You got it.
I guess that was a question, right?
Hi, council members.
It was kind of a question, but like I said, in the end, it's up to them. I'm not going to be there looking at, don't do that tree, don't do that tree, that one's okay. So, okay, okay, it's a question.
Just so you know, yeah, we respect the trees, um, you know, we've worked with staff quite a bit on, on this. We did see, there are a lot of trees we are saving. We're, we're probably saving as many, a little bit more, if you look at that list. I mean, there's a lot of huge trees we're saving, um, but there, there was like six or seven that the arborist, you know, was, and, and those were committed saving. I mean, there's the forty-inch tree and the thirty-six inch tree. I mean, we're going to, you know, do whatever it takes to save those big trees that are going to be close by, so, I mean, we're, we definitely want to do the best we can to save the trees, and we, we're committed to that, absolutely.
That's, and not only important for me to hear, it's important for all the people to hear. It's, it's a big deal here right now.
I understand.
And I hope it stays a big deal, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, closing the public hearing, uh, we have, I've already done that, but council discussion.
I have my light on.
Go right ahead.
Right. Um, just to reiterate, I, I, I'm not, I wouldn't say I'm a tree hugger, but I went up to a cabin, and there was a lot of trees, and I hugged a lot of them, because they, they were nice. They actually were nice, to tell you the truth.
Have you got any pictures?
No. I told my wife, I'm a tree hugger now, please, because the trees are nice, you know, it's, it's amazing to me how they make you feel, you know, they, they're, they're clean. And I understand the development, what they're trying to do, and I, and I appreciate what you're saying as far as trying to save as many trees as possible, because we are going through this process. This council is going through the process of how do we make sure that we have the canopies and the size trees and all that? And I've seen development where we cut down the trees and then we put as, as, um, Vice Mayor Diesel said, crepe myrtles, and you only need them, and then, you know, once you get in there, you're, they're gone, you know? I actually did that myself in my development, because they were ugly, and I put something else up there. But it, it's just the, the thought of, we need to leave some good stuff for our, our kids, and, um, it, it's nothing like a tree, and a tree takes a long time to get to its size. And it does hurt me when I see a big tree is knocked down to put, you know, blocks and mortar and all of that. So I think you hear us on that. I also, even though we haven't come up with an ordinance with LID, um, we, we really need to be careful, because we want to have something that is going to benefit. We can say we're going to do something for you if you do LID, but if it's not going to help what we're looking for, then it, it's useless. And I asked, I don't know if it was a dumb question, but I asked the question about brick pavers instead of concrete in the driveway. And I was told, you, you got to have something that's, uh, pervious in the driveway in order for you to get what you're looking for. So that costs money, but I found, when I changed my driveway out, I had a, a concrete driveway, I changed it out to, um, brick pavers, it actually was cheaper for me to do brick pavers than it was to do concrete. That's something you can think about. I understand, you know, you have to have a return on your investment, but please hear what we're saying. We happy that you are doing a development, we're just asking you to help us, help the lagoon, help our children. When I came here in nineteen seventy-nine, I would tell you, I would go underneath the bridge and throw a chicken bone with a piece of string on it, and I'll catch all the blue crabs I want. You just can't do that anymore. And that saddens me, because it's nice catching blue crabs, to be honest with you, and you just can't do it. So we all have to do our part, even developers, we don't want you to come here, clear the land, do your thing, and then you're gone, you got your money, and you're gone. So asking everyone to just be good citizens and do what's right for our environment and do what's right for the citizens. Thank you, sir.
Well, that's in our hands right now.
Yes, it is.
So that's what we're trying to figure out what to do, I think, whether to do encouragement or, or requirement, but.
Make a motion.
Anybody wants to make a motion?
Okay.
Wait one second, before you do that. No, he, he was up first for a motion.
Oh, okay, you got it.
You want to add as a comment?
Well, I, I was going to make a motion with condition that, uh, the grand trees are saved, and that the trees over twenty inches DBH, is that the right word? That, that we take care to see which of those can be saved.
The motion is in your hands, so, you, unless you decide you, you would like her to make the motion. I mean, that's up to you. You had your light lit.
I did have a light, and I appreciate that, obviously, and I would go with what you're saying, as long as we put a caveat on there, if they can be saved. I don't want us to be in a place, or a developer be in a place where they want to do it, but it's just not possible for them to do it, and then they're, they're stuck, because we say something about twenty inches, you have to save it, and it's just not going to work.
What if we said, uh, trees over twenty inches, uh, DBH, um, you must, must follow chapter thirty regarding the criteria for removal? Does that work?
Ms. Busaka? I think you're being asked a question.
Yes. Well, first of all, I have a question for you. I don't know the definition of grand trees, because we don't use that terminology in the code right now, so I need that.
But there's a term, term in the code, though, for the large trees.
We, we have four sizes of trees in the code, and the largest is twenty inches, and it is the trees for which mitigation is required. There has been some discussion of grand trees.
Right.
In, in proposed ordinances, but that does not currently exist in our code. So that's my first question to you. My, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so if we were to say, if a tree is over twenty inches, it has to meet the criteria in the code for removal, and that the large, over thirty-inch trees, we would, do what we could to preserve them. Does that make sense?
Yep. That's my motion.
I just want to make sure that's not trying to lessen the code, because, you know, thirty, thirty-two criteria for removal doesn't have a tree limit size. It says, trees located in a portion of a lot or parcel in which a building, driveway, sidewalk, retention area, or accessory structure will be constructed. sidewalk, retention area, or accessory structure will be constructed where redesign to avoid tree removal is not feasible, is the criteria. It doesn't have a limit on size.
Maybe we shouldn't limit the size.
So he needs to follow that. I was only asking.
So the condition, they have to...
Well, the condition based on what you just said, right?
Right. That is code requi, I just read the code. Chapter 30.
Ms. Busaka says...
Section 3040. Unfortunately, I know that by heart.
My question. I, I hope the clerk got that motion.
I got 3032. Yeah.
Okay, I know something else by heart. Thank you for correcting me.
3032 is criteria for removal.
Can you repeat that motion so that everybody knows?
I, I'm not sure.
This is what I heard. I heard that grand trees defined as 30-inch DBH should be saved.
Lawley, Lawley, please.
If they can be.
Right.
That was, and that the criteria for chapter 30, section 3032, shall be required, that shall be followed for the removal of all trees.
Correct.
Yeah. We're good with that.
Can I second it?
We have a motion.
Yes.
We have a second. Did you say it? You said it now. You were making the motion a minute ago. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes. Oh, no. Sorry. I knew I was going to miss it. Roll call vote.
Just so I can clarify the motion, does, are we including PNC's recommendations or no?
No. That's not in my motion.
Okay. Okay. The roll call is Member Jordan.
Yes.
Member Nelson. Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
You guys want to take a stretch break or anything?
I already did.
All right. All right. We're on new business now, item 12A. This is advisability for low-impact development ordinance. The city's comprehensive plan requires the city to evaluate low-impact development practices to conserve natural resources and to increase the use of green stormwater management treatment, native Florida-friendly landscaping, porous pavement materials, and the preservation and restoration of natural draining characteristics. To better understand the benefits of LID practices, City Council has received a presentation from East, East Central Florida Regional Planning Council explaining LID concept in January 2020. LID best management practices include design approaches for managing stormwater runoff and protecting water quality, which reduces the ecological burden of the development on the Indian River Lagoon and the local waterways. The attached ordinance and resolution establishes new technical manual, section 11, Low Impact Development, in support of land development regulations, which introduces and encourages the use of these innovative stormwater design concepts. The Titusville Environmental Commission considered low-impact development options during their meeting on August 13th, and unanimously recommended the adoption of an ordinance and resolution encouraging the use of Low Impact Development Best Management Practices Action Plan. The TEC would like to see the ordinance again when the final draft is complete. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered low-impact development options during their meeting on August 19th, 2020. The commission, the commission unanimously recommended to the council to direct staff to create the LID ordinance by January 2021, and only if necessary, use a consultant. The recommendation included making the use of LID a requirement rather than encouragement. The ordinance, when resolution presented, would only encourage LID. And you had a presentation this evening by Mr. Glendo and our city engineer, K.B. Fosso. And subject to Ms. Busaka is here to answer any additional questions you may have on LID.
Ms. Busaka, do you have any comments, first of all?
The only thing that I wanted to let you know is that the city has made some progress with LID. And I just want to highlight that protecting surface waters and wetlands is an LID, and that chapter 29 contains wetland and conservation area requirements. And section 26 talks about preservation of wetlands, and that wetlands preserved by conservation easement is equal, equivalent to open space. In addition to that passive, preserve open space, there are open space requirements currently in the code. There is a LID which talks about, one of the BMPs is Cluster Design and Conservation subdivisions. Both of those are in our code now. In addition to that, maximizing, minimizing building footprint is required in, by maximum building coverage as well as maximum lot coverage. We also have restrictions about the removal of soil from the ACC as reduction of natural topog, natural topography is minimized in the ACC. That's section 3207. We encourage the use of native vegetation, and we require some small percentage, it's 10% of the area of lots to be preserved as low and moderate water usage vegetation. They recommend a Florida-friendly landscaping and fertilizer ordinance. That ordinance was adopted and contained in section 1227. The Stormwater Management Technical Manual currently requires dry bottom basins. However, treatment trains are the exception to that, and they can be utilized, that would be a wet pond, as an alternative if a dry pond will not allow nutrient removal criteria to be met. The shoreline protection buffer includes use of swales, berms, and native vegetation to convey stormwater. That's considered to be an LID. In addition to that, the, there's pervious pavement is permitted throughout the city. You may remember you adopted that ordinance in 2019. The shoreline protection also requires native, natural vegetated buffers. So in this, I don't think that we have, even the policies that we have in place, I don't think that they are perfect. And I think that there's some room to move forward. And we are looking at that partly in the open space ordinance as it's being developed, partly as I believe you're going to see a lot of LID looked at as part of the landscape ordinance. So I think that we are doing this incrementally. But I just wanted you to know that the city has not just ignored LID. We haven't always called it LID, but those policies do currently exist.
So I have a question. How do we get that into a, a motion, though? Doing it incrementally? That's very nebulous.
I guess I need to know what council wants to achieve, and then I'll do my best to figure out how to get there.
Counsel?
Me, okay.
If I don't look at you, you complain. If I look at you, you complain.
Oh, it could never please me, right? All right, I got my light on, so.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, please. Wait a minute. Member Nelson was first. He was too slow.
This is what I would like to see us accomplish. I think that there were things in the matrix and things on the slide presentation that Eddie showed us that we could incorporate into our regulations. And I would like to see us provide some kind of incentive for people to do those kind of things. I personally, when he showed page two and he was showing the swales, I thought those were really, excuse me, cool. I guess, I guess I'm a nerd. I thought they were cool. The curb cut, the rain gutters, the additional landscaping. And, and of course, we already have the pervious pavement. But I would like to see us figure out how to encourage our developers to utilize those methods between now and the time the state gets around to getting that, that together.
If I understood what you said, you want to encourage through incentives.
Correct.
And that you're specifically interested in swales, the curb cut, rain gutters, and additional landscape.
Rain, rain gardens.
Gardens, thank you.
And the additional landscaping. Those were just the things that I picked up when Eddie was talking. I'm sure there are probably another dozen that I haven't thought of. But I, I would like to encourage people to start looking at those.
Okay, you're, you're up next.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for you to point to me and mix it.
Ah, it's all right. That's good.
Okay, I, I'm actually with, I think Member Stokel started it with encouraging. So alternative to is, is what I believe where we should be. Except add with what Member Nelson said, some type of incentive. I don't know what that is, but I think encouraging is one thing by just saying it. But if you put some incentives there, that could cause someone to do a little bit more. And I actually like, you know, the rain gutters. To me, I think rain gutters should be on, on how, all houses, to tell you the truth. I, I've seen them. Besides, it helps with erosion when you have gutters on there. So my main thing is that we're, we're going in the direction of the LIDs. Really don't care, you know, I'm, I'm not focused on really anything. Just that we are going, we're going to be focused on that. It's a smart thing for us to do. And we can encourage our existing, I'm really into our existing population. Not thinking about new development. I'm thinking about, you know, old development and what some of our people can do to help with LID. And that's all I have, because it's almost 10 o'clock, and I don't think very well, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Didn't want to talk till you pointed at me. You're not going to point at me, okay? Anyway, we're having a good time tonight. I'm going to go back to how I started when the question was asked, what's an LID? I want a lower impact. And I think, quite honestly, the less specific I get, the better I think I might be. Because if there's a developer who comes in, or, or a business who comes in, or maybe even, you know, the individuals, if we can work it that way. If they can work on, you know, lower impact, it, show me how you're doing that. You know, you, you show us how you're, you know, doing the LID. How are, how are you doing that? How do you want to do that? You might tell us something we hadn't thought of. So I don't want to be so specific and say, I want to see them do this. I want the permeable, you know, ground areas, and I want, and those are all great. But this is kind of, you know, I just heard the young lady out there say earlier, we'd be the first in Brevard County. So this isn't like there's all these, you know, templates out there. Here, do it this way, do it that way. This will work for you. Give us some ideas. I mean, just throw it out there. What can you do to lower the impact on our environment, basically? And, and that was my answer to the question in the beginning. We don't have to get real deep into it. Just get going. And then I would also agree, give some incentives, you know. And again, she said that earlier with enthusiasm. Give some incentives. You know, show us a new way. Show us how to limit the impact. And if you, there may be some way, there will be some ways out there that we hadn't even thought of. So if we just go with the things we've seen, and we've had three or four presentations. We had a guy come in from somewhere else and, you know, had all the separate stormwater areas instead of one big one. I learned something there, and then some of the things that Member Nelson's talking about. But we don't have to just go with those directions, just because it's brand new. So I just say, lower impact and show us how you're going to do it. And, you know, then we may have to have some approval standards as people submit them. But that's, that's how I feel about it.
I just want to kind of, it was brought up before about things that we can do to encourage them.
Mayor, can I get you to, there, thank you.
Sorry. Things that we can do to encourage it. So it's not, you know, it's just not, well, you got to do this, you got to do this. They're not going to do it if we, you know, if they don't have a reason to, or it's a requirement, one or the other. So are there, is there some thought or that staff can think of that would, that is done elsewhere like that, or?
I'm quite certain that we can bring back to you some ideas about incentives to allow. We, I, I think that Eddie did a pretty good job of talking about incentives that other communities provide. I think that staff's, there's probably some ideas that we have, that we could do a better job. So I think we can provide to you some incentives to encourage this kind of LID development.
So are you recommending withdrawing this, or postponing it, or something of that sort?
What we wanted to do was to get direction tonight, because we didn't advertise an ordinance. So we couldn't, we couldn't ask for adoption this evening. But we wanted to know what kind of ordinance you wanted us to create. And we just gave you an example of something. But we have to go through the process of the formal advertising and going back to the TEC and PNC.
Okay, so you really don't want us to...
The direction that I have received tonight, I think, has been very useful. And I think it will allow us to move forward.
All right. So what do we do with the resolution, then? Table it, or?
First, we'll take cards and get public comment.
Yeah, I'll go through.
Then you'll give just direction to Peggy of what you would like her to bring back. Because this was not scheduled to be approval of, of anything. It was just advisability and direction to staff.
Okay. All right. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, we have cards.
Yes, sir. The first card is Stan Johnston.
Having to start, why don't you start when I speak? Are you going to speak? The clock.
Turn it on, please. Speak.
Thank you. All right, Stan Johnston, speaking as a professional engineer. This proposal, I want to say is that theoretically, I support it if it works. But it's not going enough, not going far enough. I mentioned to you some things that should be disturbing to you, should very be disturbing to you. One is that I've, I've shared it to you about the city is ripping off the public. The city is, the city government is, has, is doing by, by its own unintentional errors, or some deliberate errors, is destroying the environment. And I gave you some examples, like Baker subdivision and Publix 50. So we're missing things. And here's, here's what was said at this, at this meeting tonight. It was said that, oh, it was talking about caring and love and communication. And I wrote these, these things down. And is this nonsense? Is this nonsense? I mean, compared to what you're doing, like what Mr., Mr. Jordan is doing. I mean, here he is an engineer, and, and he's, he's promoting ideas that certainly disobey Newton's and God's law of gravity. And what I'm talking about is water flows downhill. In this case, is none of you can answer the question, where did the water go? Because when you answer the question, when you truthfully answer whether what question water goes, it's backwater and flooding. And you need to go ahead and, and maintain these floodways. It's absolute nonsense what you're doing. It's nonsense that, that you have this, you continue to promote and support. I mean, I'm talking about here, this guy goes to church here, same church I do, promoting and supporting this lie about this $70,000 report.
You're way out of line.
No. This is, this is what you're doing. You have no business doing what you're doing. You keep lying and lying and lying. And I'm hoping that, for example, Mr. Jordan, that I'll be able to go to court. And the same with, with this attorney, Nelson. She nodded her head like this towards Stokel. She did it. You need, you need to straighten up.
Turn off his mic, please. She's at, she's making a point of order, sir. You have to stop talking, okay? Turn his... Yeah, stop it. Just, it's not. Turn his, yeah, stop it, just, it's not.
Mayor, it's not relevant, it is not relevant to the topic at hand, which is whether or not we advise staff to create low-impact developments.
I don't disagree.
So I would ask that you consider telling him to be either relevant if it happens again.
No problem doing that at all. Stan, why don't you give us a break? It's late, we're working hard all night. Why, why don't you?
Against this, be relevant.
You're going to get the time for when it was turned off to three minutes.
You know when you give it to me.
Turn it on. Go.
Well, you didn't give me any time.
She gave, we stopped.
So she didn't. She didn't do it. She didn't do it. Okay. Let me say, Mrs. Nelson, Mrs. Nelson, you've lied, and lied, and lied, and lied. All you've done is lie. And there is no report. You're the one that nodded your head to Mrs. Stokel, saying, yes, 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 on February 12th, 2019. You're lying, she.
Your time is up, sir.
Scandals. She.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
We have more cards.
Oh, we have more cards? Okay.
Kay Seenong.
Call the other cards, please. Next card.
Kay Seenong.
I apologize to you ladies for having to go through all of this.
My name is still Kay. I still live on Maryland Avenue. Okay, LID is not new. The city agreed to work with the BMAP in 2012, okay? And at that time, the BMAP said that you should be utilizing LID to prevent further degradation to the Indian River Lagoon. So it's not new. The FDEP has an LID manual. I've been spending hours studying it, okay? The county of, and if I say this wrong, forgive me, Alachua, Alachua?
That's right.
Okay? Which does have to answer to St. John's River. They have an LID ordinance. Deval County, Sarasota County, Escambia County, all have LID manuals. I spend hours reading these every night. I can't sleep at night thinking about LID and trees. My husband thinks I'm going crazy. I'm going to grow leaves soon, he says. Okay, we have a little humor now to help break the ice here. The city presented their LID ordinance in August. I'm very delighted that they did so. The FDEP has begun updating their stormwater management requirements to include LID strategies. And many of us did listen to that webinar the other day about that. I took copious notes, and now I found there's a PowerPoint presentation I can just look at. Okay. As I said, the DEP has created an excellent LID guide for water quality, providing an overview of LID strategies for reducing pollution at the source, the houses, the roofs, the driveways, and the lawns. That is the source of the pesticides. It's the source of the herbicides. It's the source of the fertilizers, the antifreeze, and all the other stuff that comes off of your house comes from us and our driveways, our cars. And, and so we need to take responsibility for the pollution that we put forth, okay? And that's what we do with LID. It is an excellent way to take control of the pollution, the runoff at its source, right at our house. When the rain gushes down and it flows off of my house, it's just like waterfalls coming off of my house. Okay. The FDEP indicates more stormwater treatment is necessary than detention and retention ponds to meet water quality. It indicates what is needed is a willingness by engineers and designers to take on the initial effort to design and permit these LID projects. It goes on to say, in many cases, enforcement mechanisms do not hold the polluter accountable for costs outside of their proprietary domain. Once stormwater flows off-site, it's often out of sight and out of mind.
Your time is, but would you like another?
I certainly would, thank you.
You says that so cute. Two minutes?
Oh, please, thank you.
You're welcome. Wait, have a motion? Second? All in favor? Go.
Once stormwater flows off-site, it's often out of sight and out of mind, giving property owners an incentive to convey stormwater off their property as soon as possible. But we want it, the water to be slowed down so it can filter into the soil. After meeting twice with developers to discuss the tree protection ordinance, I do not believe that an LID ordinance with only recommendations will provide the willingness by engineers to move beyond the conventional stormwater methods that they have been utilizing for decades and design their development as LID projects. Consequently, I agree with the P and Z's recommendation that the proposed LID ordinance should be rewritten with requirements for developers to design their sites using LID strategies. LID BMPs, best management practices, require the development minimize site disturbance, limiting clearing and grading to those areas that will contain buildings and infrastructure. The goal is for LID to allow rainwater to be retained and filtered where it falls, rather than collected and conveyed into ineffective ponds. For the rainwater to filter into the ground, the soil throughout the site must not be compacted by heavy grading equipment. The DEP manual states developers are to avoid clearcutting. Clearly marked designated vegetation to be preserved. Trees are an integral component of LID as they reduce and filter stormwater runoff and pollutants at its source. Existing canopies and native trees should be retained where possible per the manual. The TEC recommended tree protection ordinance should be approved as it will preserve trees that can be utilized for LID best management practices. Tree protection and LID go hand in hand. The matrix presented by staff is well done. I definitely agree we should eliminate requirements for curbs. One more sentence.
Okay.
However, I'm concerned that the matrix misleads developers to utilize options as add-ons to conventional stormwater management. The development from inception must be designed to be LID and treatment train of strategies utilized to reduce the quantity of stormwater and improve the quality to meet the high criteria of St. John's. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
We have another card?
Yes, we have about three. Lori Lee Thompson.
Camera, the angle's better to stand on the other side. On that side, and hold it where they can see it. Okay. Lori Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue in Memes. And you guys seem to like my pictures last time, so I brought more for you.
I want pictures.
Show and tell. So, no, don't walk. Come over here, because I got a point. Oh, okay. So, in the middle, you have this graph right here, and I have highlighted some, in the red magic markers, some, some things to pay attention to. This is a two-year graph that goes from June 2018 to now. And it encompasses like three different areas. And all of these, oddly enough, all of these red lines here all coincide with July the 14th. So every year, right after July the 14th, we seem to have this crash in the river. This is a visibility graph. So these high points are about six feet of visibility. These low points are one feet of visibility.
How many?
So one foot, one foot, 12 inches. Right now, it's even less than 12 inches.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is what the river looks like now. This, this, we are having a massive, no, Virginia Barker called them epic algae blooms going on right now. You have four different species of algies that are all in super blooms in the river right now, and they're just going back and forth. But this was taken after a thunderstorm. This water right here, this darker water, that's stormwater. It's coming out of that culvert by where you live, on both sides, actually. It's coming out at the end of Main Street, and it's coming out at the culvert by the Gemini monument. This is the end of St. John's Street. And you can see this green stripe out here? That, the unusual color of the river right now, it gives us a really good idea where the stormwater is going. This, that's all stormwater. It's all coming out of this culvert at the end of St. John's Street. And there's a huge baffle box there. We have baffle boxes. So the cigarette butts, and the straws, and the McDonald's cups are staying in the baffle box. But like you said, Mr. Diesel, what's in the water? What is in that water that's going out that far out into the lagoon? So these pictures here were taken at Kirk Point Park. This is May of 2018. That's, this, this time period in here is, coincides with this. This is, you see that the water quality was bad for a long time, because that was after Irma and the hurricanes before, Matthew and Irma. So it took a long time for the river to recover to where we started it looking like this. We have no seagrass at all, but we had crystal clear water in May of 2018. This is this year. This.
You need more time?
Three minutes? Two minutes?
Two, two minutes?
Two minutes, okay. So these middle pictures, this, this is.
Motion second?
Oh.
All in favor, say yes. Thank you.
All right, so these middle pictures, and you can see the water is crystal clear. And there's all kinds of subaquatic vegetation. So that was 2018. This is March of 2019. We were ecstatic. We, we had this, this, mostly calerpa, but it is, it is, it's a, it's an algae that will stabilize the bottom, and typically, the good seagrasses come in behind it. So everybody was so happy to see the calerpa, it's all up and down the whole entire river. And we were so happy. But then, now, this is what we have now. We had a lot of rain. What happens is the stormwater ponds, the water gets stored up and stored up and stored up until finally, they can't hold anymore. And that happens right around the middle of July. And all this water starts going into the lagoon, and the visibility goes down. This year, we're blessed with this. The calerpa that we were so happy about, it's dying now, because the sunlight can't reach the bottom. And so the calerpa's dying. You're having, you're going to have another huge nutrient load from thousands of pounds of calerpa that are dying all up and down the lagoon. We have two more months of, two more months of hot weather. It's going to be a miracle if we don't start seeing some major fish kills. That's how bad off the lagoon is right now. So this is why it's so important for the low-impact development. Forty years of stormwater ponds has given us this. This is forty years of stormwater ponds. We have to try something different. And we, and we need to make it attractive so that the developers will want to do it. I mean, and this comes from the St. John's River website. LID strategies move away from a centralized method of collecting, conveying, and discharging water to one that minimizes impervious areas and stores and treats stormwater in a more distributed fashion, sometimes on the individual lot level. And, and it's an approach that is used to conserve and protect natural resource systems while reducing infrastructure costs. The developers should be all over this. I don't understand why they're not trying to do it. And, and we could quit fighting about the tree ordinance, because if we use low-impact development, there's going to be trees that are saved. So I appreciate your time. I think that we need to try to figure out a way to, to do more low-impact development. Thank you.
Thank you for waiting so long. Okay, another card, please?
Tony Shifalo.
Yes, yes, yes.
Tony Shifalo, still in that historic house at 715 Tropic Street. And even though I live in a historic house, I'm very interested in the future development of Titusville. Probably because I live in an area that has a lot of, probably, it's undeveloped, it's empty lots, and there are a lot of trees extant on these empty lots. And I want to see them developed using low-impact development, the infill, and in addition to what goes on with large tracts at the edges of the city for subdivisions. I would recommend, I would like to encourage council to accept the planning and zoning's recommendation that you require LID principles of development, rather than encourage, because you can encourage all you want, and that's not going to make the fellow who was here earlier save those trees, because they're talking about in the edges of the property. And as the ordinances are now, it's only 10% of vegetation has to be left. That still allows clearcutting. But what I really wanted to say is that planning and zoning said, require LID, not just encourage it, and they want to have incentives. You have to have incentives too, and breaks if you're going to require somebody to do something. I'd like to point out that LID is like site-specific installations, art installations. You go to an area, you look, you see, and then you develop according to the particular topography that you're given in a particular place. So it is almost impossible to have ordinance that goes all over, everywhere, because every individual piece of property is going to have different topography. So I'm not going to take any more time, because we're all tired, and I want to go have an adult beverage.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
We have one more.
Oh, no, open it again.
I don't drink adult beverages. Thank you.
I was told we're going to have the only one. No, it's, go right ahead, ma'am.
Terry LaPlante, Melbourne, Florida. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I want to congratulate you on the important step that you're taking by adopting a low-impact development ordinance. I'm thrilled to be here, very excited to hear about it, and wanted to share the occasion with you. In reviewing the chart comparing the eight counties who have adopted LID resolutions and/or ordinances, the developers are not required to adopt the best management practices, nor do these other counties offer much in the way of incentives. This disturbs me, and I question if the ordinances, the ordinance before you that you have been presented with tonight has any merit without enforcement measures and with only minimal incentives. I encourage you to waive permitting fees, expedite applications, permits, and inspections. In other words, make the developers an offer that they can't refuse in order to ensure the quality of life for future generations and to save the lagoon. I hope and pray that we can slow down and reverse climate change by working together with developers to create LID communities here and throughout Florida. I urge you to make Titusville the first city in Brevard County to embrace this kind of green development. Such bold leadership. Don't wait, be a leader. Time is of the essence. What a great way to move the economic development of Titusville, Florida. I urge you to seize this opportunity to set a new precedence for our county. You could say no to new development requiring zoning changes to increase density unless the developers agree to the best management practices laid out in the ordinance. Or you could offer the needed incentives to motivate the developer, or perhaps some sort of combination. I urge you to put some muscle and meat into the ordinance and into its implementation. The restoration of the lagoon depends upon it. Thank you. And regards to the $50,000 consultation fee to study the soil, you know, by y'all picking up the cost of that, you know, it will make it easier for the developers to come in and see what they have to work with. So, you know, we've got to do whatever we need to take to change the direction of, of the way development is going.
Ma'am, I have to point.
Thank you.
Well, look at the timing. I have, I have to point out to you that we're in one of the, you don't have to come back up. One of the worst budget periods that we've ever been in because of COVID and so forth. So when you say $50,000, it's not that easy to come by. So when you say $50,000, it's not that easy to come by it, and, you know, we have people that still, we'd like to keep working and so forth. All I'm saying is we have a lot of things to balance.
Yeah.
Unless you want to give us $50,000, and we'll gladly accept it.
No, I just know how much opposition there is to regulation and to, you know, forcing developers to do things.
All right, I know what you're saying, but I have to point out that it's not as easy as let's do it.
Right.
Ms. Busaka, how are you?
I'm great, thank you.
Have you, you indicated before you have enough information to come back with an advisability. Is that correct?
What I've heard from four, and I, the only person I haven't heard from yet is Member Stokel, is that you want to encourage through incentives, and that you want us to develop that, an ordinance or more than one ordinance, whatever it takes to do that.
Yes, and we have to make sure it's feasible to do that, so that's going to be the hard part of it.
Yeah, yes, that's what somebody else has to do.
Yes, exactly. No, there's somebody else as us, though. That's the problem. Member, Member Stokel, are you there?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Are you, are you, are you in agreement on all of this?
Yes, for the most part. I guess where I was leaning toward is, I think that we all saw how we were kind of struggling over the last agenda item, where we all had these good intentions, but we don't really know how to manifest that. So I would like to see something where these best practices that we were presented with and some type of incentive that would potentially work for our city be encouraged at this time, and then once we get more guidance from the state in 2021, at that point in time, I think it might be worthwhile to bring in a consultant and maybe look at that point to see if there are some things that we may be able to require.
Slow down a little bit. Peggy's... Okay, okay.
We got it. Yes, sir.
I got it. I thought Peggy was about to run off the paper there for a minute. Okay, thank you, Member Stokel. She's not there anymore. Wait one minute. Okay, we need a motion to that effect.
I think we have enough information.
You have enough? You don't need a motion?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, well, next item, then.
We did Withdrawal 12B, so you're at petitions and requests, item 13.
Anybody like to come up under petitions? Look, they're all getting up. I hope they're not going to...
No, where you going?
Under petitions and requests? I see no one coming forward.
Thank you.
No, thank you all. Thanks for staying patient.
This is not a petition or a request. Tony Shifflow here. Planning and zoning had a, had a suggestion about the $50,000 consultant. They said, "Don't hire a consultant. Make the LID requirements, and then have the developer hire the consultant to engineer to see what his land is. Let them prove what they need to do." Thank you.
Life is a balance, ma'am. Remember that.
Well, yes, it is.
Okay, no more petitions. Council reports. You've got my report. I don't have anything else to say about it. Any reports from you?
My report.
Go right ahead.
I spoke earlier about how I went to the, get the guns off the streets at, I'm not sure exactly where. We're on DeLeon. But it was at a, it was off the road a little bit by church, near Gray Coach, old Gray Coach. But, you know, the kids, there was a time, and the police shut the roads down and let the kids ride motorcycles and four-wheelers and had a great time. Had bounce houses and just had a really good time. It was great to be there. Jeff Davis and Mr. Mallett for two, and I know there's more, did a great job. But my big deal of the day, and I, Member Jordan just saying I'm not crazy, I did try to get some pictures in, and we couldn't get it to work, and I apologize for that. And I did get them in. But I do want to say that I went to Robert Jordan, Member Jordan's event at the Viera Charter School on Friday. And in the end, they not only dedicated an education building, which Mr. Jordan had a tremendous, obviously, a tremendous amount to do with, and I'm going to bet that he's had a tremendous amount to do with everything there, but they named...
His store, his school.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what, that was the idea here. Exactly. But they, it's easier for somebody else to say this, I would guess. They actually named the new education building after him. And I got to tell you, while I was there, I was very proud to be there. I was, I told my wife, I said, you know, I don't know that I've ever been prouder of somebody else getting something. Well, I could also see the sincerity, the emotion, how you felt about it. And I think that everybody felt the same as they watched. And then he gave myself and Marcia Gaddke a tour of the place, which is an amazing place. So I just really want to personally take my hat off to you and tell you how proud I am of you and how great it was to be there to see that. And I wanted to get that said, and hopefully, I can replay it or something. You know, it's just really no good time, especially with what was going on today, to jump in here in the middle of a meeting and get it. But this is my spot for it, so I wanted to congratulate you on that, and thank you for inviting me to be there.
I think you deserve it.
Now, since I've done all that, you can say something.
Yeah, I got to say something, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. And I'll keep it short, because I'm telling you, it's after 10 o'clock, and I do not do well after 10 o'clock. I don't do well after 7 o'clock, to tell you the truth. But I was very proud to have the vice mayor there. I know others were there in spirit, for sure, but it was a wonderful occasion, for sure. And I always tell people, whoever is there, you are meant to be there, for sure. And it was, it was nice to have members of Titusville there with us. I, of course, was shocked, because I was not expecting that at all, but it's all about the children, and we just have to remember that, you know? When we're, we lie down for the last time, I always want to believe that I've done everything I possibly can to serve the people and especially the children, and I've been blessed to be able to do that. So thank you so much for even saying anything about it, for sure, sir.
Anybody else? City managers' report?
Yes, sir. The budget hearings are coming up, two budget hearings in September for a budget adoption, and I have no action items subject to your questions.
City attorney? Okay. With that, I'll call this meeting adjourned.
Oh, can we do more?